We have one of our new members, Diana, read the mission statement.
Okay. The Ipswich Public Schools aspires to empower all students to be mobile citizens who are effective communicators, analytical problem solvers, and savvy consumers of information. We propose to do this through an emphasis on communication, critical thinking, creativity, self-management, perseverance, and collaboration. Students will be active partners in authentic learning, offering voice and choice in demonstrating competency.
Thanks.
So for announcements tonight, the school committee retreat will be held on August 10th. Location and time are still to be determined. All school and district offices will be closed on Monday, June 20th. The last day of school for students is Tuesday, June 21st. This will be an early release for all students. The middle and high schools will dismiss at 11:20 a.m. and the elementary schools will dismiss at 11:55 a.m. Grabbing the lunches and transportation will be available. The extended day program will also be running. And the first round of community listening sessions on the future of the elementary school project will take place on July 26th and August 1st. More information on the time and location of these meetings will be shared in the upcoming week. Any special acknowledgements?
I'll start. I'd just like to acknowledge and congratulate our middle school girls' track team who won the state championship last weekend.
Wow.
Which is a great accomplishment, obviously, but it follows on our girls' middle school basketball team winning the state championship over the winter. So I think it's pretty exciting to have this great group of athletes coming up into the high school in the next couple of years. So we look forward to seeing them perform.
I'd like to just mention the Pops concert last week, which was spectacular and so much fun and packed, full auditorium for a great show.
It was great.
As well as screaming. There were a lot of people that screamed as well.
Middle school concert was pretty impressive, too.
Yeah.
With some pretty impressive eighth grade singers and wrote their own song.
If you close your eyes, you would never know that those were middle school students in any of the ensembles.
No.
They were amazing.
Any other acknowledgements?
All right, I will have one. The eighth grade civics project was amazing, to go to the display and have them present their issues. And a lot of them, as I think Brian and I acknowledged, were about emotional learning and stress and depression in teens, and a lot on the river and the environment in Ipswich. So it was...
Yeah. I'm going to talk about that in my report later on.
That was a major theme.
Yeah. So I've got a couple. One, the entire staff who persevered through another difficult year. The 138 graduates that we had walk across the stage last Saturday onto a new adventure. All of our sports teams who made it into the preseason play. We've had a number of them this spring. And then our retirees, we wish them well-deserved retirement. And finally, I have to give another shout out to our incredible nursing staff, who, you know, who are like the linchpins in getting us through yet another year in all of our schools, as far as keeping everybody safe and healthy and, you know, keeping track of all the COVID cases and stuff. So shout out to them.
Anybody else, or... Okay. Any citizens comments?
Yes. I'm Lynn Josephson, 46 Washington Street. I was in contact with the open meeting law office of the state in Massachusetts, and I asked about having the group having their meeting in a restaurant. Do you know whether that was kosher? And so I'd like to be there applied. That's okay?
Sure.
Thank you. The open meeting law applies when a forum of public body members meet and deliberate, that is communicate about public body business regardless of where the meeting takes place. When such communications occur, they must be done in properly close to meetings, even if such communications occur during a retreat meeting. However, if a public body, if public body members, sorry, are not deliberating about public body business, then technically the meeting as defined under the open meeting law has not occurred. It's not a violation of the open meeting law for public body members to be in the same place at the same time, provided that no deliberation occurs. If members simply want to socialize and not deliberate about public business, then such communications would not be considered deliberation as defined in the open meeting law. If there's no deliberation, then there's no meeting, and the public body would not need to post or keep minutes. Please be advised that discussions regarding procedural or administrative methods may relate to public business within the body's jurisdiction, including whether the body should consider or take action on specific topics during a meeting. The open meeting law does not carve out an exception to the definition of deliberation for procedural decisions among public body members about how its meetings should be run. And a discussion concerning readership of the public body is considered matter of public business that should be reserved for an open meeting. Discussion of a public body's operation is public business within the body's jurisdiction. All good. And so I said, "Well, if they have their meeting in a restaurant and the room's too small, is that a problem?" Then they said, "All meetings of public bodies must be open and accessible to the public unless an executive session is convened." Although the open meeting law does not specifically prohibit public bodies from holding meetings in private buildings, meeting in a room that is too small can compete the public, which likely violate the open meeting laws. Public bodies must make reasonable efforts to accommodate anticipated crowds. For in-person meetings, access to a meeting must include the opportunity to be physically present, as well as see and hear what's being discussed by the members of the public body. In addition, for an in-person meeting to be truly open to the public, it must be held at a location that is accessible to persons with disabilities. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. So if everybody is okay with us reversing order, we're just going to quickly go to the second item on the agenda. The reason I've been sharing so far is because I'm the senior school committee member, and tonight's our reorganization meeting. So we're going to be voting for new chair, vice chair, and secretary. So are you guys all okay with just moving? And we'll just do that, and then we'll move on to the ELL presentation? Okay. So nominations for chair this year?
I nominate Greg Stevens for chair. Second?
Okay. Anyone have any comment? Anyone else want to nominate anyone? Shall we just vote? Does anyone?
Is everyone sure?
I appreciate that Greg has picked up this job and has taken it and has been proactive in engaging comments and feedback from other school committee members. I think he has a great relationship with the superintendent and other committee members, and I support his reappointment as chair.
All right. All those in favor?
Okay. You're up, Susan.
Great job, Paul.
So I'll nominate Kate Elliott for vice chair.
Second?
Any discussion?
I think Kate has done a good job stepping into the role of vice chair. Equally, I think that she's got good working relationships with members of the committee. She works very hard, and I think that she will do a good job if reappointed to the role of vice chair.
Okay. All in favor? Okay. Great.
And Laura?
Oh, technically, the superintendent, but then I... So I'll nominate Dr. Blake for secretary.
Second?
All in favor? And you can designate.
I designate Laura.
Laura?
No, no.
I think Laura has done a great job.
All right, good.
All right. Thank you.
So we will move on to our presentation of the English learner program. Looks like we have our EL program staff here.
We do.
Tonight. So one of the, this came about because over the course of the year, I've been seeing the praises of our EL staff. As you know, we've seen a significant population increase in Ipswich. So this evening, we have three of our four EL teachers with us. We have Lisa Nylan, who is the veteran member of the EL team. And we have Gabby Archimbo and Sarah Trotzky. Sarah is at Doian. Gabby is at the middle high school. Lisa is at the Winthrop School, along with Jane Dutcher, who is not able to be with us this evening. So I invited them to just talk about the changes that we're making to the program and what the work looks like this year and moving forward. So I will turn it over to them.
Is there somewhere I should stand?
Right in front of that microphone right there.
And that microphone's not for us. It's more for the people at home. It seems like it's not doing anything.
You are very important. So just before you start, anybody that's going to be speaking, you need to speak right into that microphone so that the booth can pick it up. The rest of us, we can hear you fine, but out in TV land, they won't be able to.
Okay.
Thousands watching at home want to be able to hear you.
I think you're meant to sleep.
Thank you for having us. We're really excited to be here today and give you a brief overview of the English learner education program here in Ipswich. In today's presentation, first, we will give a brief overview of who we are and some important definitions related to the work that we do. Then, we will share with you our work and accomplishments from this past year. Finally, we'll share with you our next steps and our goals as we plan for the upcoming year. And at the end, we'd love to take questions. So, starting with a brief overview, welcome to our world. We already did introductions, but just a review of who we are and what schools that we're at. All right. So before we really get into this, we want to define what is a multilingual learner. So Massachusetts state law defines the term "English learner" as a student who does not speak English or whose native language is not English, and who is currently not able to perform ordinary classwork in English. However, although the state law still uses the term "English learner," the educational community is shifting to using the term "multilingual learner" to describe the same population of students, because multilingual learner is asset-based language, and it also recognizes that many of our students come here already speaking more than one language. In this presentation, we'll use both terms interchangeably, because when we talk about state laws and coding, it just is easier to go with what the state uses for terms. But it's important to note that there are various profiles of a multilingual learner. Some are newcomers who have just arrived. Actually, most multilingual learners were born in the United States, and others come with limited schooling and might need unique extra supports. And there's a bunch of different types of multilingual learners, but overall, on average, it takes about five to seven years for a student to reach full language proficiency in English. We also thought it might be helpful to identify how we identify a multilingual learner. So as most of you know, when a family registers their student, in Ipswich, they go to central office, and part of the registration process is a home language survey. When a family indicates that a language other than English is spoken at home, the ESL teacher then analyzes the information from the home language survey and the enrollment packet, and then may administer an English language assessment to determine the student's English language development level. And then we use those screened results to determine whether or not the student should be coded as an English learner and receive services.
So we wanted to give you, after that overview, we just wanted to give you a little bit more information about multilingual learners in Ipswich. There are about 50 students across the district, which makes up 2% of the population. About half of those students speak Brazilian Portuguese as their first language. Spanish is also fairly common as a native language for our students. And then we put Pashto on there as well, too. That's a language of Afghanistan that has become more prevalent in the past couple of months, along with numerous other languages as well. So this graph just shows the progression of numbers of students from 2019 to today. You can see across all grade levels, the number of multilingual learners has increased in the district. On the left-hand side, those are our current numbers. So Doian, there are 10 students, 22 at Winthrop, and then 15 across the middle and the high school. And we continue to get new students, even Lisa, as a couple weeks ago.
May.
May, yeah. So I don't want to go too much into the weeds, but I thought it might be helpful just to get a sense of the landscape of English learner education programs in Massachusetts. There are many different programs, bilingual programs, dual-language programs. Most districts employ the Sheltered English Immersion Program, which is what Ipswich has, which is when instruction is in English with supports for students. And then you'll see there's basically kind of two components to SEI, which is the acronym for Sheltered English Immersion, one of which is sheltered content instruction. So our students spend the majority of their day with their teachers, their content teachers, right? Whether they're a second-grade student, they're in the second-grade classroom most of the day. If they're in middle school, they're with their content subject area teachers most of the day, and those teachers are SEI endorsed. They employ different strategies to make sure that the content is accessible to those learners. And then the ESL instruction is where we come in as ESL teachers, and we work with students from sort of one to three periods a day, depending on their proficiency level, to really dedicate that time to sort of systematic, explicit, sustained instruction in the English language. Okay, so what have we done this year? Curriculum and instruction. We've done a fair amount of this this past year, one of which has really been kind of purchasing and developing curriculum aligned to LEA standards, which is sort of our English language development standards. So we've purchased some newcomer curriculum. We've developed our own curriculum, both at the elementary, middle, and high school level, that's differentiated to student levels. We've done a lot of alignment at the elementary level around sort of how we deliver those services, what the curriculum looks like, and what our assessment looks like. And then we've spent many, many sessions kind of unpacking this gigantic book of standards for our, for ESL, which were released in 2020 in terms of the most updated version. So trying to dive into those, creating a user-friendly kind of dissected template, and then an informational video that we plan to use with other teachers as well, because it's really meant to be a collaborative process. Me again.
In the student engagement and leadership realm, there have been some exciting new developments this past year, including the formation of the Multilingual Leaders Club, which I'm super proud of. So this club was created by students with the mission to utilize the assets of being multilingual to better the community and bring together our diverse people and families in Ipswich. And here you can see a picture of the second showcase that we held, June 3rd, at High Street Studios, where we had about 100 Ipswich students, families, and teachers that spoke all different languages come together to celebrate multilingualism by listening to the students perform their work, to their original poetry, informative presentations, personal narratives. We even had a student who arrived from Brazil six weeks ago who spoke in English to the entire audience, and that was really, really powerful. And we got to eat really good Brazilian food, which was made by two of our students' families. So good. And so this is one of the really great developments that we've, that we've seen through our students this year.
So one of the things that's very special about Ipswich and their ESL teachers and program is that we provide a lot of wraparound services. If you don't know what that is, it means that we're more than teachers. We try to ensure that families who don't speak English get information from the schools in their native language. We have, the SMOR can be translated, which is the weekly newsletter. However, some of us translate it and then send it through Talking Points, just to be sure that the parents can read it. We use Talking Points, which is a free platform for teachers, for educators, that goes directly to their cell phones. And they don't need to know our cell, we don't need a phone number, we don't need a phone number to do that. So it's been very handy. I know our school nurse uses it as well. Many of the classroom teachers use it to communicate with families. So the other thing is, is that we've upped, we have interpretation services for conferences. We use Base State right now, and we have some other private interpreters that we've used. And also, we've connected families to Open Door, which is the Blue Pantry, I'm sure you all know about that. At Winthrop, we have the Mobile Mart come on Thursday afternoons, and I know that Sarah Trotzky's trying to get it to come to Doian one afternoon. Jane Dutcher and myself actually take the kids who take buses to the Mobile Mart before they get on the bus so that they can bring the food home. So what's next? Because we're tired. So we've developed, actually Sarah started, but we've developed a website that's going to be predominantly for teachers to access. It'll be a one-stop shop for resources. We've already started uploading things, like the standards dissection that we did this year, informational videos about it, and a lot of the accommodation things that we suggest that teachers use for different students. And Gabby is going to pilot, pilot, sorry, pilot, a professional development program. All teachers who are renewing their licenses have to have 15 PDPs in ELL in order to renew. They have to have some instead, too, but 15 for ELL. So Gabby's going to pilot a 15, two, two sessions this summer of 15-hour professional development, a PLC, around supporting multilingual learners, which will provide them with those PDPs. The outcome, it's going to be some reading, pre-reading, it's going to be sessions in person, it's going to be projects, and at the end, they're going to come up with a tool of some sort that they plan to use in the following year, which will also be posted to, we have a pamphlet on our website. So it will also be available to all teachers. Okay. So is there any other questions?
Could you, I'm interested in what a typical, I'm sure there is no typical day, but could you just describe when a student comes in to the district, has no English knowledge at all? How do you integrate with the teachers? How does that all work?
So we have the whole language survey. We get, we know ahead of time the student is coming. We, placement is, well, I can speak to the elementary level, so maybe Gabby can speak to the middle high. So we know, we have a meeting with the principal, we do, and talk about placement for that child. Meet, once that's determined, we meet with that teacher. And then this year, we've been bringing the family in before the child actually starts. I have a lovely community member who has helped me enormously this year with translation. She's very connected to the, to the community, and she usually comes in and sits with us with the family. She's a mother of a Winthrop student who's in fifth grade and who I had both of her children, so I know her. So she comes in, and we talk to the family, and we talk about what the schooling experiences were. The teacher is there, the classroom teacher is there. Then what I do is I provide, this is if a newcomer comes. If it's not a newcomer, it's less, less of a challenge. So then I provide the teacher with materials, an iPad, that has, an iPad that has apps loaded on it that the student can access. And we have Duolingo on that iPad. We have beginning ABCs on that iPad, so that the child, because I can't be with the child all day.
Right.
Has things that they can be practicing when the teacher's teaching the other children or use it to translate. We use Google Translate to help translate for them what's going on in the classroom. Does that address what you're asking?
Yeah, exactly.
And we integrate them. And quite frankly, if they're a newcomer and they're immersed in English, it comes pretty quickly. They're verbal, they're receptive, and they're expressive. The reading and the writing comes later. You think about how your own children develop language as toddlers and young, they understood what you were saying to them before they could speak. It's the, it's all the same. And they learned to read before they learned to write, right? So it's, it's exactly the same trajectory. Exactly.
Great, thanks.
Yes. You guys do amazing work, and just, I've been looking at the Traversal Weatherall Grants for a couple of years now, and, oh my God, you know, that's hard.
I keep asking for them every single year.
No, they're incredible, and it's just like the creativity and the beauty of these programs is amazing. But anyway, my question is, how do you balance in placing a child, if you have a child, with no English, and then they're, I'm assuming they're doing more of the age-appropriate placement, not necessarily the curriculum?
Because we're not, yes, because it's frowned upon to keep them back, because it's looked at as prejudicial.
Right. How do you support, I guess, the social-emotional piece of that? The frustration and the, you know?
Well, Gabby can probably speak to that more. I don't see a lot of frustration. They're happy to be in school. They love being with their friends. The social piece is very, that's like the fun part of the day. You know, I haven't seen any frustration in that way, but Gabby, I don't know if you can speak to that. It's a higher level.
I think that's a great question, and I think that's something that, like, we're constantly trying to figure out, because it can be really hard for students when they first come here. But we sort of do, in the middle and high school, at the middle and high school level, like, all of the things that you would normally do for any other student. It's just that I happen to be the person who's sort of the check-in person. I'm actually like located right in between, my room is right in between the middle and high school, which is perfect, so they know that they can come to me whenever they're feeling frustrated. I've also been working a lot with the counseling team to figure out how do we support our students with their mental health in a different language. I speak Spanish, so I'm able to help with the Spanish-speaking students, but I don't speak Portuguese, so that's something that we might write a grant for. But it is like a constant, you know, a constant dilemma. I think what we're really lucky for is that we have our club, and we have other students who have been there and done that, and our students are so empathetic. And whenever we get a new kid, they're like, "Oh, my gosh, I got it, I got it. Like, I'll, I'm going to help him, I'm going to help her." And they're like, "I've been there before, like, you'll be okay." And so they kind of like create this whole big family. But it is hard, and it's something that we're trying to figure out.
I guess my only other question is probably for elementary space issues. I know they've been at such a premium. I'm a little more familiar with Winthrop than Doian, but I'm sure, are, do you guys feel like you have what you need?
So I began the year in a similar situation as Sarah, where I had like a block space within a room with Title I. And it became apparent right before we hired Jane that we needed a classroom.
Yep.
So we got half, half a room. I don't know if you have been over there to see it, but we got, we got half.
That's when I saw there was a third of a room.
Well, it's a little bit more than a third, but yeah. And next year, we'll get like a half room, because we're moving into the music room, because music is the thing. because music is moving to the White House, back to the White House. So, you know, space is a challenge. It's just the challenge. I'm, I feel honored to be able to actually have a classroom now, because I have so much stuff, and the kids love coming, and they own the space, and they, you know, it's, it's a big part of what helps them succeed. So, I don't feel that, I don't know, Sarah?
Yeah, I share with the reading room, so I have like a third of the space, I think, to just the, the nature of, like, luck of the draw, right? I have kids who are spread out throughout grade levels, so in terms of pulling students, it's not like I have a big group. You know, if I were to have eight students on one grade level, pulling them at the same time, that's when I think there'd be a little bit more of a challenge. But also, teachers, you know, are really flexible, too, with figuring out space needs. If I need to do something bigger, I'll sometimes use someone else's room, too.
Yeah, thanks.
So, kind of on that being, you know, we're supporting them socially and emotionally, how have we, or how do you think we can, you know, create a welcoming environment? Like, how can we, so for our English-speaking students, are they attuned to, okay, we're having new students, and we're going to appreciate their language, and, you know?
I, they're always excited. I mean, this district has been welcoming, including all kinds of kids forever, even when my kids went to the school. And so, they're excited to have someone from Brazil, or Afghanistan, or Russia, or Belarus, or, you know, they're excited, it excites them. That's been my, you know, experience. It's the way our culture is, I think, you know?
Yeah, I did, so, as well, Brian, I love, she does really nice stuff. Every single morning, the morning we meet, it's in a different language as part of it, and I think that like starts to foster an awareness of that we're all coming from different places. And then, students, if they have a new student coming in, like, we'll talk to the teacher all the time, we'll learn some key phrases in that student's native language, we'll put, you know, labels in the classroom in their language. There's signs all over Doian in multiple languages, I'm sure it's the same in Winthrop, too. And just like any new student, it's nerve-wracking coming in for the first time, so just making sure that they feel welcome.
Yeah, the, sometimes we have our students try to teach the native-speaking students some, some words, and, and that's fun, they like to do that. You know, they, they love having new kids come in, so it's never been really of an issue at all.
Yeah, I just didn't know if there was like something specific, but I guess like you're saying, these lines, they-
Well, we prepare the classroom that the student's going to come, you know, and they get excited, and, you know?
I don't want you to undersell all of the work that, that you've been doing in the community, though, because it's not just what happens in the classroom with the child and their classmates, or the teachers. The outreach that, that you're, you're doing to the community in terms of, you know, providing the parents with resources, you know, Gabby with your, the evenings that you're doing to, to get families in, and really focusing on making sure that not only are the kids connected, but the families are connected as well. And I think that's a critical piece that's, that hasn't always been-
Right. Yeah, we, actually, we have a volunteer, who actually talked to me at the beach today, who's very excited to offer English lessons to parents. And so, that's going to be offered, I just don't know what the timing is, some of my family, they work a lot. Also, with our Afghan family, families, family. We have, I have a volunteer from the middle school, a special education teacher, who's going to work with the children over the summer to try to help boost their English. And I'm going to give her materials and things like that. We've also connected families with the library. We've connected families with scholarships for summer camp for the kids, so that they can work. We use Mass Child, we've got clothing for the children. We've got snow outfits for our newcomers who come from Brazil and never seen snow before, through Ipswich Caring. I mean, we're, we take care of the families, it's not just the kids.
Any other questions?
I was just going to say thank you very much for all of your hard work. It's, it's such important work, and I know it's, it's been a hard year. Enrollment has gone up quite a bit, I know. My question is, I want two questions. One's very simple. So you said there's fifty, about fifty multilingual learners, and that's up from what historically, Lisa, like, thirty-five? Or just a ballpark?
Well, I prepared for this question, because that's my year. So I originally started with, with, I was planning, the largest amount of growth is at one group. I started with planning on having five students total.
When you started?
In September. So I got a call over the summer that there were going to be two new kids coming from Belarus, great, and that they were going to be, and then, in September, I got a call that there would be three more, but the Belarus kids had already been in Danvers, so they weren't newcomers. Okay? So-
Sorry, those are the numbers.
Oh, those are the numbers. So it just, it just came- It went up a lot, like. So pre-K to five, there were, there were thirty-two this year, last year there were twenty-three. That's at the elementary level. So it went up, I like to-
And then it also includes preschool, just something to keep in mind, too, so sometimes the numbers are like inflated or inflated.
Right.
Preschool students also have English learners, even though they're not required testers.
Right, right.
What can we do for you?
I'm good, I love my job. I mean, we all love our jobs, that's why we do it. It was a challenging year for me this year personally, just if you, can you show the slide?
Oh, sorry.
The kids kept coming. It was just, can you put it in prison? Thanks. What happens is, is, it's not the fact that they're all newcomers, it's that if they, they come, so they're there, and then I start teaching, and then someone comes, and then I got to start over again with that person.
Or keep those kids going.
Yes, it's like this whole, like, tag team kind of thing. So that's kind of, that was the experience at Winthrop. I ended up with five, I started with five plus three pre-K, with no newcomers. And newcomers require three, two to three forty-five-minute sessions of direct ELS instruction a day, so it's like half a day. September, I got four non-speakers, October, I got three more, November, I had one left the district, and then in December, I got another one, and one, another one left, and then January, we got three, in March, I got one in preschool, April, I got one, and then May, I got two. So.
So you're ready for summer vacation?
Yes.
Sort of.
Well, this is helpful for us, I know-
So, so it's just, and there's no control over it, right?
Right.
Right? So, and, and that's the thing, and, and part of why we got Jane was, I couldn't, it was, I couldn't do it. I was like, because I couldn't teach the kids, you know? So, it's great, Jane and I have a great core, we work really well together, we have the same mindset, you know, she wishes she were here today. But we have a plan for next year, you know? I mean, she came in the end of January, so it was just kind of like, okay, here, you pick up this, you pick up that. We didn't have a lot of time to like, cajole, but we're going to over the summer and just have much more, a better plan. But, and we'll probably get some more, there will be movement, there will be six.
Yep. Well, thank you for coming, I know today's a long day after the beach, on top of a long year, so, thank you. I would love if, if you could forward us the presentation, I think it's helpful for me to, if that's okay.
Is it okay? Yes?
Well, thank you for having us.
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, next up, we are-
I've been bragging.
Yeah, no kidding, right. We're fortunate to have Heather Leonard with us tonight, Chair of our Paine Grant Committee, to talk to us about the approved Paine Grants. And we will then take a vote. Do we vote to approve each one as a committee, or just all of them in total? Do we?
If we do, each one.
I think historically, you've, you've done each one.
Reviewed each one.
Okay.
Or voted on each one.
All right, so while Heather was setting up, Jeff, did you have any comments as our rep for the Paine Grant Committee on the grants, kind of how the process went?
Yeah, so, we had a kickoff call, I guess, the committee first is comprised of Heather, who's the chair, representatives from at least two, I think, two of the school buildings, or teachers from two of the school buildings, as well as Dr. Blake, Jonathan Mitchell, Kathy was involved, and then parents, and I think there's maybe one, I guess there was a vacancy in the business community member at large position. So we met over four nights, so we had an initial introduction, we were able to review a synopsis and the written application for each of the grants. And then, over a second meeting, we had presentations, which were very tightly timed by Heather to keep us on track. And we did that via Zoom, and she was able to move people in and out, and give like a seven or eight present, minute presentation. It was great to see how the live presentation really kind of gave color and kind of developed what we had previously seen as far as the written application. There were so many great, you know, ideas that were, you know, people got so jazzed and excited about, and were inspiring. Then all the hard work came, where we needed to kind of look and make, you know, decisions about, does it really true to, you know, the wording of the trust? I think the committee worked really diligently to be very thoughtful in, in that, and made very solid recommendations. And hopefully, that sets Heather up without stealing too much thunder.
That was perfect. Bring you to everything.
Perfect timing.
Well, thank you for the time to be here, and I think Jeff did a great job getting an L-line, but I think under some of the amount of time. So while our committee meets in a relatively concentrated block, there's a lot of work that goes in. And so I just want to pause and just shout out all of the different folks that have been involved in the, especially this time of year, it's a pretty significant commitment. And I see some nods from folks who've done it before, so I'm just so appreciative of all of the educators.
We actually have Ted Spinelli here with us.
Oh, hey, hi!
Snuck in the back.
So Ted was, Ted was new this year, and hopefully he's willing to continue on in the next year, but it, it's really, it is a commitment and of time to do, to do the work, so it was a really great, it's, it's a beautiful thing, right? It's a great committee to be able to be, to be like, yes, we give money, and it's wonderful! But it is a significant commitment, so shout out to Ted, and to Jeff, and to Dr. Blake, and all those folks who, who were here during those different meeting times. And Laura, who does a really wonderful job making sure everything is ready and accessible, because, you know, there's a lot to work through with all of that. You're going to see me remind at the end, we are still looking for business community reps, was, we stole her, and she's now a school committee member, so we are looking to fill her seat, and also another position for a community business rep, as well as a select board member. Okay. I do this as a reminder, just for folks who might not know where the Paine Grant money comes from, and this information is just helpful to remind us that it's not a random bucket of money, and it's not a school, it's not a part of the school operating budget, that it was something that was, that came from William Paine and his family, and the trust that maintains this money and invests this money, then does all of this work to make sure that those funds from this land that was donated, and the funds from when that land was sold, back in 2012, now is continually provided to support enrichment and enhancement of the Ipswich Public Schools, which is very exciting. So there's a lot of great information out there for anyone who's curious about where this money is even coming from and why. And I'll just put the mission statement up there. Ted and Jeff have had to sit through this about, what, 200 times in the last two months? But it's important just to ground ourselves in the, what is this for, and what is the purpose, and the why we're here. And this information is just shared again to remind us that it's not intended to replace the public financial support of education, but the intent is to improve the quality and value of educational experiences, and increase the scope of learning opportunities by the initiation and customization of creative educational practices. So we keep that frame as the purpose and intent of the funds, that's the work that drives the decisions. So there's often amazing, wonderful, thoughtful things that are submitted, and we'd all love to say yes to everything, but this is really our charge. So when we go back to, if we have to make challenging decisions and recommendations, this is what we lead into that work with. So, here's where we are for this year. We were provided with an incredible amount of almost $700,000, which is phenomenal, so thank you to the Feffys for their incredible work. And we had applications for $828,000 or so. So we do have some critical decisions that have to go in. I will let you know that the way the process went, and Jeff did a great job, so I won't repeat. But what we don't do is, we don't go dollar by dollar. So what we really do when we're going into these is we decide, do these different applications align with that mission statement and the purpose of the grant? It should be recommended, because what we find is that if you start to do dollar by dollar, start to get pieces of grants, and think which thing do we want or not want, or why, and that's sort of beyond really what our purpose is. So we've really shifted the process, so we're not thinking about adding the money up all along, but instead, we're looking at each grant individually, making our recommendations, and then we'll give you our recommendations, and you get to figure out the dollar by dollar. So we're aware of it, but we're really moving off of, based on the recommendation, we align it to the purpose of the grant. And I will let you know, it isn't random. A piece of the work that our committee members have done, that's a significant dedication of time, is that in between the understanding, the meeting where we get trained, and when we start to hear the presentations, we read through every grant, which are pages and pages of information to advocate for the, the grant that they're applying for, and that is a significant amount of time. And then for every grant, we complete a rubric, which rates the different components. And you'll see, there's a teeny tiny graphic in there, because I want to maintain the confidentiality of the scores, but I do want to share that we then rank order the grants, and we look at what those mean scores are, so we can see both in the presentations and that information, but also quantitatively, how did we score the different considerations while making those decisions? So, I'm, I'm going to go through the process and go each grant at a time, but Chair Stevens, did you decide if you're going to vote after each one, or at the end?
I think we'll vote after each one.
Okay, all right, perfect. So there was one application that was in that initial request, that was actually able to be funded through an alternative source, so that was a wonderful thing, that we knew track record boards that'll be replaced, but not funded through this source. So the first grant I'm going to share about is the 21st Century Music Classroom. So this grant was really focused on diversifying the opportunities in the music education. And I think the, the thing that Ms. Palmyer shared when she was presenting was the idea that, while Ipswich has the incredible numbers of 25% of our students, as compared to most other districts, having 10% participate, that also means 75% might not be actively involved in the music department. So there are alternative ways and methods for students to engage in the music classroom. So this is looking to diversify options, or in allowing students to opt in to music. So we remove both a current, sorry, a modern band opportunity, which includes some different specific skills within modern band, and connects also with production and technology integration within the music classroom. So the exciting piece here is that it would include both ways that you shift to that, that modern band, which includes some of the work that's really happening in that technology lens with that production, and it includes learning about how do you use that skill set. So it's a pretty exciting framing. It is something that would be, is being framed as an option for students to take during their related arts time, so it would be something that would be during the general education school day. It would be open to middle school students, that's her goal, is to start with the middle school. And that was, that was voted for a recommendation by the Paine Grant with unanimous support.
There's no questions, got to get a motion to accept?
So moved.
Second?
Any discussion?
Is this for equipment?
It's a combination, so this will actually include specific instruments to support this, but it will also include technology equipment that allows you to run some of these, like, hefty programs. In addition, you can actually acquire the programs that allow you to do some of the music production through the resources.
Is it a club or class, or?
It would be a class, so it would be- It would be a class. So it would be like my daughter's in orchestra, somebody might have modern band.
Okay.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed?
Question. So if we approve all these, we'll go over the allotted amount.
I won't let you get there, don't worry. I've got to take care of you. I'll make sure you don't go wrong. I've got to see if I built it. I'll take care of you. So the next grant that I'm going to share about is the Elementary Library Technology Enhancement Grant. This grant was submitted by both of the library media specialists, I'm not sure if that's the term we use here, from Doian and Winthrop Elementary Schools. And they're seeking funding to support the continued integration of the digital literacy and computer science standards within their instruction. Primarily, they're seeking these funds to access digital tools to help students integrate and move from that idea. And I've heard that term used a lot, moving towards that idea of digital creators. Instead of just using technology, that they're actually creating using it. So specifically, they're looking for resources that include iPads. And the benefit of an iPad is it has a two-sided camera, so they can watch and film while filming something else. And also those work to support the coding with specific robots that they have access to already. So it allows students to engage in that coding activity. They're also looking to support a particular coding program with grades three, four, and five. And also thinking about some video creation that'll support be integrated in. So it allows students to actually integrate and collaborate the technology with peers and create artifacts through the use of technology with having these tools. The other piece they mentioned is that acquiring these tools then allows teachers in the building to then sort of borrow them from that library as well so that teachers can integrate that use of the technology resource into their classroom. And that was recommended from the Paine Grant Committee with unanimous support.
Can I get a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
Second.
What's the motion?
To accept unanimously.
Second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
This is good stuff. Look at all the good stuff we're already doing. All right. These are big things. I can't wait to see them in practice. This is the, I mean, it's fun to imagine what this will look like next year. Okay, so the next grant I'm going to share is the Place-Based Learning Grant. This was a grant that was applied for by all of the building principals in the district. And this grant is a reoccurring grant. It has come up before the Paine Grant Committee, I believe, as long as that's been running, yeah? I mean, so it's been, it's been a repeating grant that is reoccurring. The idea here with place-based learning is sort of what we used to term field trips. That idea that, that learning is happening in those places where you can see it, you can experience it, you can have hands-on learning experiences. Specifically, this grant really does a lot of work to support that equity and access, to make sure we're doing some cost controls so that all of our students and families have a chance to participate and engage. So this, depending on the school's plans for the use, it is broken up across the different schools. And also there's some dedicated to the arts department and to special education summer. But the goal is that it allows either a subsidized access or full access and full funded to different opportunities to learn outside of classroom setting or either learning out in local or even some further distance learning spaces. And this was approved with unanimous support from the committee.
Move to accept?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? So far, so good.
All right. Dual enrollment. So this grant, as again, it's another repeating, this is the second year that this grant has been applied for from the high school with Claire Powers. And this grant is offering high education and career pathways during the school day that allows students to be duly enrolled in both Ipswich High School class and a local college class. So by doing that, they're really targeting students who need the opportunity to open up some doors, to consider some post-secondary opportunities that may be out there, specifically for first-generation college students or students or families that may receive free reduced lunch. And that the goal of this is that by starting that process of what does a college class look like, feel like, sound like? And that additional benefit of going in to thinking about beyond high school, having some credits already in the bank per se, really sets students up for that bridge and that opportunity for success. There was significant success this year. Actually, all students got a C or above and so passed with success this year. Their goal is that this is going to be the last year that this grant is sought because they're hoping to integrate it into the school budget. Additionally, one of the committee members asked about expansion and it was Claire did share that North Shore would love to expand, to offer that idea of dual enrollment across content areas, but they would need an onsite teacher. So maybe some potential groundwork to be laid for some opportunities for all of our students in the future.
So how did they come up with that number? Is that just an estimate based on previous year?
That's a specific number that covers the enrollment cost for the credit. It covers the payment for those students to like be enrolled at North Shore and it also covers the cost of the staff member here who does that bridge and that teaching of the course. Because the course is a shared top between North Shore faculty and Ipswich.
So it's not a per student cost, it's actually paying for the courses?
That is included. The student's enrollment is included in that. Yeah, so it's for the staff member, for the credit and for the high school staff member. Yeah, great question.
Just as an aside, some of the well-developed programs where high schools have done this a lot, you can actually earn an associate's degree by the time you graduate high school.
And thinking about the rising costs, especially for families who might not have done this before, this is a really powerful thing. So this was voted to be recommended by the committee with unanimous support.
Can I get a motion to support?
Move to support?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Great.
Moving on. Ted, am I missing anything so far?
No.
All right. You got to jump in though, if I do. Okay. The next project and grant that was considered was the Doian Playground Project. So this grant was applied for by Principal Goodell O'Brien from Doian, representing and on behalf of the Playground Committee at Doian. So this is targeting the Playground Project that's, that work you may have heard is underway. It's work that they're doing a lot of work to get outside vendors and bids. They're doing fundraising within the Doian School Community. The grant that's being sought would help to fund what is being called Phase One. So there are multiple phases to this project. Specifically, this grant that they're seeking funding for would cover, would replace the ground cover. So when you think about sort of the old school woodchips, it's going to bring a replacement for that. It would provide a walking path that connects the different areas of the playground and also acts as an integration with that local ecosystem to allow students to walk and engage. It is ADA compliant, so it would allow anyone who might have mobility challenges to also engage in that path. It also includes the Phase One of playground equipment, which includes some specific climbing structures and other aspects of it. Specifically, this, the reason for this request is that the current playground that is out there has far outlived its projected life. And they're actually having parts of it that they've had to take down or close due to safety or aging of those different pieces and components. One thing I did want to make the committee aware is that knowing that there's potential changes happening or being even considered, one of the big pieces that this group did consider was an option of mobility. So the playground could be moved or relocated at any time. And that was a key component that they did look for when they were getting their different vendor bids as well. And that was voted for support with unanimous support from the committee.
Any sense of what, how much this is in terms of the entire project?
I believe that Principal O'Brien mentioned that they were, they would then have to aim for an additional $100,000 to $150,000. And they are doing work, you know, I know my daughter brought in a big bag of change of doing different coins and different grade levels. So they're doing some, not that the pennies will pay, but you know, they're getting involved. But they are doing some other active fundraising and sourcing that's happening concurrently within the school community.
Has there been any talk about sort of doing a community-type build that?
Yes.
A bunch of us did and went through it.
Yes, that is the one that they're planning for. That is part of the plan, is to do a community build with this project.
Good.
I'm glad you're excited you're signing up.
I'm happy to.
All right, I like it.
I'll drag.
Ted helped with the last one, so he can go too.
He killed the last one 20 years ago.
That playground is long overdue for a replacement. And I think the Winthrop Band has really turned into a community playground and so to have one, you know, in a different area of town would be great. A good, a good one.
I have a question about the community build. So this, the photo, what's included? It's not a, like that, that needs to be installed.
So there's aspects of it that would be, but there's components that are part of a community build as well. So there's these, the group that they, is Uniplay? Is that right? So they actually, so they sort of oversee and do it. So when you get to the point of like they, the ground cover, the replacement of the ground cover and the walking path are, those are going to be something that are actually going to be, they have people that are doing that. But the actual building of the pieces of equipment is something that the folks from that organization come and they oversee, but then community members actually help to do the install, but it's all supervised by folks from the company.
Okay, can I get a motion to support?
Move to support.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Okay, moving right along. So the next grant that was proposed is a visualizing and verbalizing grant. And I just have to shout out Colleen Harrington, who, our committee had a question, I emailed her and she's like, oh, I'm so sorry I didn't get back to you sooner. It was like two days later. She's like, I happened to, I think she had a baby like the week before. I was like, oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't email. So her communication skills are amazing. I just want to shout her out. But this, this grant was being proposed to provide, the primary funding is going to professional development. So it's targeting in training, I'm going to show my notes, special education and speech-language pathologists to teach explicit and targeted comprehension skills and strategies using the visualizing and verbalizing techniques. The idea is that this would both support, direct support for students that require it, but also that the integration of those strategies would help those staff that have been trained to collaborate and connect with their colleagues to support the integration of those comprehension strategies into general education classrooms. She estimated that would support approximately 60 students and those might be students who will be receiving that direct support through those trained staff members with the potential for those graphic organizers and other strategies to be integrated within other classroom areas. And this grant was also recommended for support with unanimous support from the committee.
Can I get a motion to support?
Still moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Animus.
Good applications this year. That is what, I do want to just take a, I promise I'll take two more, but just a shout out of, for every one of these applications, I've shouted out the committee members who gave a great deal of their time. But to even complete an application is a significant lift and for our education to take time out of their schedules that are already so overly burdened to submit for this is a real commitment to their work and their dedication to their students. So I just wanted to shout all of them out, not only with the presentation, but just the completion of the paperwork to submit.
Can I ask a question just about the last one?
Yes.
Real quick. I don't know, Colleen, she's a special education teacher?
Yes.
Yes.
And so I'm just, I'm, I'm just curious and reading through, this seems, this is for all students?
So in the actual explicit program, the video program that could potentially support students who require that level of targeted, targeted training, which might be through an IEP, through a 504 or through support. But the shift she talked about a bit, or she proposed in her grant was that those explicit strategies, some really specific graphic organizers or other comprehension strategies can then be integrated so that it can support and benefit, you know, general education teachers doing it in their classroom with all students and then strategies that could be integrated across. I don't know if that answered your question.
It does. I like it.
All right. Oh, and that would be supporting for both Doian and Winthrop as well. Okay, so the next grant that was submitted is to target Doian third-grade learning experience in Plymouth and Patacet. So this grant was seeking the opportunity to have an extended date, not an extended day, the program, but have an extended school day, field trip to Plymouth and Patacet museums and the Mayflower. So specifically, they're looking to, to take students down to that area to experience those different museums and return. The extended part is that if you think about traveling to that area, we know in anything, traveling nearer around Boston is just going to increase your day or you're only there for like half an hour. So they're really looking to allow students to go there to experience those different components. And this is really deeply connected to the standards at grade three. It is an experience that some students may have had in the past. Winthrop used to do the, when it was the Plymouth Plantation, students from Winthrop did have that experience to go. My, our understanding is that that was actually a trip that was sponsored by a private sponsor and was funded from a private person in the past. Winthrop was offered to see if they want to join in on this and they wanted to wait and see how it went for Doian. I think both potential grant approval and also to see were they able to get down, travel, experience and come back successfully. And they're potentially considering joining to, to participate in that in the following year. The reason they're applying for this grant is because the cost for both, for the buses to travel for the extended time for staffing and for any sort of subsidizing of that trip for any students who need it would be cost prohibitive and would be almost $100 a student, which is far beyond what they would feel reasonable asking, so they would not do the experience otherwise if they weren't able to find external funding. And this grant was recommended with unanimous support from the committee.
Any questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Why wouldn't this be under the Place-Based Grant?
That was a question that we had as well. It might be because it is a brand-new grant, but also additionally because the Place-Based Grant, for most of what's in there, it's a subsidy for students or families that might not otherwise be able to participate, whereas this funding is including the bus transportation, the extended time for the, any staff that's going beyond that working day and supporting that. So I think it was above and beyond. That was a question that we did have in terms of general practices, but I don't know if that had been entertained or not.
Why didn't Winthrop join in this grant?
Um, I think the, what was shared with us is that they want to wait to see how it goes.
Traditionally, I think that was a field trip that.
It was a fifth grade.
Only in Doian had it gone.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
It's too bad that they're not all getting the experience.
But maybe they will eventually.
Not all the students are going to miss it.
Right. And so I think that's a piece, I think the interesting piece is that Winthrop did have that opportunity before where Doian did it because of that private sponsor. So leaning towards equity, is this something that we can explore? What would that cost be? And what would that require to do on a more equitable level of cost as well? So I think it's something that, you know, they're estimating that cost for, for buses, for the additional hours for staffing and for subsidizing any students who need to attend, but they haven't done it and it hasn't been done since pre-COVID. So I think a piece that we'll be trying to understand, like, you know, what is that cost? Is this how much it would cost for each school? But I can't speak on why some of the chose not to.
It's too bad.
Do we get a motion to support?
Still moved. Support.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
I love that we're hoping to expand opportunity. That's a, that's a wonderful thing too. So if any of these grants can launch expanded opportunities, I think anyone on our committee can celebrate that.
If this grant, to your, to your question, Jen, if this grant were to come back next year, it would likely be put in with the Place-Based Learning.
So the next grant I'm going to share that was requested is the grant called for cardio room. This grant was submitted by Principal Mitchell for the high school, middle school. So this grant is looking to seek funds to shift the, what is currently known as the aerobics room in the middle school, high school area, to shift it to a space called the cardio room. Specifically, funding was sought for equipment, including treadmills, rowers, exercise bikes and ellipticals, chairs with flip-up desks and a technology promethium board that was sought. Specifically, this, this grant was looking for, to re-energize and renovate a space that currently exists. Another piece of the funding also included refinishing the floors and electrical work. And finally, written in the grant, but I don't know that it was captured in the money, was a stipend that would provide an hour after school, three days a week to seek opportunity for some supervision for the space. The grant noted having students have a place to go after school to provide sort of a place to engage with cardio equipment and hang out. Also, it was mentioned to support a place for teams that could, the team, sporting teams could use to integrate. And also was mentioned the high school health teacher who I guess at this point actually doesn't have a classroom, so tends to move around. And this could also be a space that could be used for that. The committee did not vote to recommend this grant. It, the grant, sorry, the vote was one in favor with five opposed. The areas of concern included, it seemed unclear of like how many students would actually be impacted, how, who would actually get to use it, middle school or high school students, and how the logistics or the timing were. There were questions about, is this goal to like outfit a health classroom? Um, there were questions about, is this goal to like outfit a health classroom, is it equipment for sports teams? So there was a, a, some confusion about the goals of the, of the grant. Um, but there was a scene of the opportunity for a benefit for students that have, having a space. There's definitely some positive scene to it, but the, um, the areas of concern sort of lay in the confusion about sort of that, that vision and goal of the space and the usage for students.
Could you describe what the current space is like, Dr. Blake? I, it, I'm not familiar. Do you know?
I, I can't.
You don't? Okay. Can you?
I can't. It's not, it's not the weight room. It's a separate space than the, than the weight room with all the.
Oh, okay. So we have a weight room. This is different.
Yeah.
Apparently is more of a catch-all for all the outdated equipment that had been replaced over the years.
Okay.
Just kind of become a.
Junk room.
Like, like the junk drawer on the kitchen.
Right. Okay.
Yeah, I guess, yeah, I'm a little disappointed it wasn't recommended. I mean, I think we, from, from what I hear, a lot of kids would like to stick around and use the weight room and have a room like this to use. Um, but we don't have a cardio room, we don't have staffing for the weight room, so they all end up going to the Y. And you go to the Y on any afternoon and it's packed with our kids. And it seems to me like it would be better to have them here at school for an hour or two hours or whatever the timeframe is. So, um, yeah, I guess I'm a little disappointed that we didn't, the committee didn't see that.
I think part of the concern was that the staffing request was like one additional hour, three days a week. And so it's not a big room, so it didn't seem like there was really an opportunity for many users, given that it would only be.
So demand is too high.
Open for that additional time. Um, so I think it, there was part of a concern there. I think there was also a concern with capital, you know, expenditures versus, you know, enrichment and whether this should be something that should be absorbed eventually in, in the budget as far as making improvements.
I think I've got to agree with Greg. I am just listening, um, to John Mitchell talking this year and listening to the presentation by the, the school mental health team that came. I think anything we can give our kids that support something healthy for them to be doing is enrichment, is needed enrichment. Um, it's not video games, it's not, um, you know, needing to get, to be able to commute over to the Y. It's, it is, um, and I feel like the logistics questions are, could be easily answered and easily flushed out. Um, and so I guess, I'd like to see this go back to the committee for flushing out the questions that the committee had, um, if possible. And then to answer those questions. I think we've done that before and I'd like to see that happen with this.
Would bringing like a Tom Gallagher to that meeting to help answer any questions? I mean, who would make those decisions on staffing and, and accessibility and ironing out that programming?
John wrote the grant, so maybe he may end, Tom?
That's just an idea. I don't know.
Yeah, I agree with Emily. I'd like to see, I'd like to see the logistics flushed out and then maybe be able to make a more educated decision on that after.
It seemed like small questions that can be answered versus like big overarching concerns.
Yeah, I think the overarching concern is that the, if the ask was an enrichment program for after school that allows students not to go to the Y, here's how we would do it. I think that was what the committee was hoping for, but it was a lot more about, here's the cost of the, the technology board, refinishing floors, electricity and the equipment. And then there was the mention of the hour after school piece, but that wasn't clear. And then it got confusing when it was like mentioning the health class being housed there, sports teams having access to it, and maybe students after school. We didn't see that it was an enrichment per se of, it sounded like a redesign of a room that was in place that had lots of potential uses, but a lack of a clear plan for this is being done for this group with this plan with this staffing. So that was the hesitation was that, the ask in the presentation. And when we do the grants, please know, the committee reads the grants, we submit all of our questions to the presenters before the presentations. So it's also not something that we haven't had a chance to ask some questions to get clarity. And I don't know that the plan was fully flushed out to the point the committee felt supporting it, rather than not having had a chance to ask questions.
The other, the other possibility, um, is that the school committee can take it under advisement and based when we finish at the end of the evening here, this discussion, um, we have a discussion about what's been funded versus what's not been funded. If it's something that the school committee still wants to pursue, we can, we can have that discussion with the.
I support that. I mean, I agree if, if, if we can get it. I like the idea of what Emily said and having an enrichment opportunity and, and places for kids to go. I feel similarly about the library. My daughter's forever frustrated that the library closes, the second school ends and she's like, why can't I stay and study? She just wants to stay and have a place to go. And this room could be, seems like it could be a similar place for kids that want to stay and do something active and healthy and, you know, with their peers at school and, and to give them the opportunity, if we have a space, I mean, I think we should investigate it. But I agree, it, it seems like the focus should be more on giving the kids an opportunity to stay and have that experience, not so much the equipment.
And that's that piece. So our job as a committee is to take the lens of what the purpose of the, the grant is, given the thoughtful reading and the questions in the presentation, make a decision based on the information that we have. It's not our job to go back and say, well, you asked for money, we wish you had asked for this instead. Can you read that? That's not our role. I do want to just emphasize, there's a lot of, um, there's a lot of thought that goes into that vote, so I don't want to diminish, like, there was, every member of the committee loved the idea of students having a place to go after school and a healthy, safe place that they can connect with each other and do something that was an alternative to maybe some students just going home. So please know that that, that was not a lack of support from the committee. We've, our job is to make sure we're, we're being good stewards of that grant and following what that said. And the piece we were missing was that clarity of the, the purpose and the.
Yep. And I fully respect your vote, so maybe my feedback's more for Mr. Mitchell than for you.
But I, I think that is the challenge of the application is it's, it's, it's no joke and it's, it's challenging to complete as well. Um, so I hope that as a, as committee chair, I can help to make some recommendations that might help make it so that we're not in a weird spot that it's sort of a lack of clarity about what things are aligned with funding purposes as well.
So let's hold on this one and go on.
Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay. Uh, the next grant that was proposed is the improving student achievement through adult learning. Uh, this grant was, uh, the application was submitted by Principal Mitchell on behalf of all of the principals across district. So this was an ask for, um, all of the building leaders. Uh, this grant is a repeating grant and has been asked for in previous years. Um, and the goal is that it's funding some specific professional development learning areas. Um, each, each school or each building leader has a different plan for what they would use that funding for. The idea being, if such high schools recommending, um, sending a student support team to the American School Council Association Conference, the middle school would like send ELA teachers to the NCTE convention. Uh, Winthrop has a few lists of a variety of professional development areas that they want to, to engage in, to support vulnerable students. Um, and Doian was looking specifically at a few different methodologies of the responsive classroom training. Um, the committee as a whole was in support of the work in supporting our educators to be effectively trained. The one area of question or concern is, are there more localized options that would allow us to be more efficient with spending the money on professional learning and training and less on things like travel to Texas or other locations? So are there equally powerfully and engaging opportunities to participate in professional learning that are more local? Um, so that was the one area of feedback from the committee. Um, the committee did vote to support this grant with unanimous support.
Any questions?
What was the, what was the end result of that question?
Uh, so there was a question, for example, like, is there is something more local than Texas for the council association? And, uh, Principal Mitchell's like, that's a good question, there might be a more local one, that is the national conference. Um, I don't, but I don't want to speak on the behalf of all of the principals. Um, he happened to be the presenter on behalf of them. Um, with some of the feedback that was shared is how valuable it can be to get out of your normal day-to-day and to go and engage in conferences, to be in that professional learning space, the opportunity to network, the learning that happens when you leave a presentation and you're engaging with each other in a shared common area, um, and seeing some presenters that you might not have on a local scale, so that there's some positives to it. But, um, there, there was also sort of the not knowing if there are the same things available in local spaces with the possibility that they may be.
Pre-COVID, this was not, it was not unusual to send folks to conferences, you know, wherever the national was, that tried to keep it close, but it wasn't always possible.
Can I get a motion to support?
Move to support. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Uh, the next grant application is, uh, it is also a repeat grant application. It is the college application boot camp. Um, this grant is seeking to provide a free opportunity for rising seniors, so students in the summer before their senior year. Um, and specifically provides support for students who are considering applying for, um, post-secondary education. It provides, uh, targeted training in areas that can be incredibly challenging, including supporting students through the financial aid application process, um, interviewing skills and thinking about what does that look like, sound like, how does it feel in practicing that? Um, and completion of an essay. So as SATs are becoming more optional for many schools, the increased value of the essay as a component of the application is, is becoming more and more critical. Um, so that is something that, that plans for this year is actually to increase their support and targeting that essay development and that essay writing over the summer. Um, it is something that has been asked if, is this something that we can charge a fee for for students to participate? And the feedback they've received is that, um, of the students that participate, only 25% would, would participate if it was a, if it was fee-based versus if it was grant-funded and free, that means students that were able to engage. And it was recommended to be funded with unanimous support.
So I guess my question on this is similar to the question I had on the one previously in terms of like, how did they come up with that number? And if demand exceeds what we've had in the past, how do we account for that?
Um, that number is coming from, um, the stipends that, for the, uh, staff that, that host it.
Okay, so regardless of the number of kids, it doesn't matter.
Yes.
It's just, okay, got it. Okay, good.
And their numbers of engagement have increased over the years. Um, they actually even added a day, I believe, um, and the students still came in that summer to, to have that support and that opportunity.
Yeah, it's great.
Well, as a parent whose younger son went through this program, it was awesome. And I am delighted to see that they've added the interview skills because I, I, as you say, especially with what the kids have been through and the increasing anxiety, I think it's great to get that chance to practice those interview skills. I think it's going to be a really good experience.
Okay, can I get a motion to support?
Move to support.
Second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Just a few more from me. The next grant application is the high school music department England trip. Um, this grant is a grant that is seeking to provide support for students to engage in the high school England music trip. Uh, this trip has apparently been in place since 1998 and occurs every four years for the high school. Um, and it allows students in the, uh, music department to travel over to England and actually perform and travel around and perform in different sites and actually engage with folks in, in abroad as they get to a chance to learn and, and connect with different folks in different cultures. So they might be performing at a, a local church one day, they might be performing at a street side another day and actually getting a chance to engage in, in local communities. Um, the ask specifically, the money that is, is being asked for, um, is focusing on three particular areas. One would be to seek a 50% reduction in the cost of the trip for students or families who, um, receive a free and reduced lunch. Um, one would be seeking a 50% reduction for families that have multiple children because the trip is offered once every four years. It is students essentially through their freshman through senior year that have the opportunity to go. So if there are families that have multiple children within that band, they'd like to provide support, um, for a reduction of that. And finally, there's a cost to actually send over rental of certain equipment. So if you can imagine the cost of sending over a timpani drum or a tuba are incredibly expensive, so some of those costs would, would include shipping of certain things, but also the rental of larger instruments that might otherwise not travel so well. Uh, this was recommended from the committee, um, with one abstention.
Yeah, so the cost per student for those that don't have kids going is $3,400 for those, so it's pretty substantial cost. And as a result, I'll be selling raffle tickets.
Would anybody like to buy some raffle tickets from this lady?
Any questions?
Uh, I have a question about, um, the free and reduced lunch criteria. Uh, it's my understanding that that's a hard group to target net right now because we've been giving free lunch for several years and so maybe people haven't applied that might be eligible and so I want to, I don't know.
So this, um, that program, federal program is ending coming July 1st, so as of July 1st, new applications, a new application process will be going out to families. Um, there's also some different ways that we can pick up those, those families if they don't necessarily apply in district. We, we have opportunities to identify them in other ways, so.
And the, the program is for spring of 2023. So there isn't that of a window from when the ask to free lunch ends and when the trip will be taken.
Did they already have to made a commitment by now though? I'm trying to remember.
For the trip?
Not yet? Okay.
If you want the discount, the deadline was last night.
We're about to get another discount then.
Can we get a motion to support?
Move to support. Second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
I think I need to abstain from this.
Do you guys need to? I only have one kid.
I have two.
Greg's selling raffle tickets.
I only have one.
I have two, gone.
Okay. Uh, the next grant that, uh, review is the creating innovators part two. As the title implies, this is a repeat, uh, request or a connected request. It's not a repeat for the same thing, but it is a grant that was requested last year that part leading into this request. Uh, this grant is seeking to continue to bring in the work of computer science standards and content across secondary schools, but particularly at the middle school. Um, the grant itself would be targeted to fund, the bulk of the funding would actually, um, fund the computer science teacher for grades six through eight, um, to integrate computer science curriculum access for all students in the middle school, which, um, the plan was that actually students would start to take a course so that by the end of eighth grade, they will have completed that full trajectory of that computer science course. Um, the final steps of equipping a Zoom room or a technology enhanced room that could, the middle school, high school can both use, um, and additional licenses that includes, uh, subscriptions to support virtual field trips, Zoom subscriptions and other access to streaming services for this grant. The committee, um, in general, had some questions about this grant being that, um, the, the grant itself last year actually had asked, was framed, uh, differently and that the ask itself was looking for a coach. And then the, the components of the grant that were asked for included like an esports component and some other components that, when the grant was actually spent, it was shifted significantly and ended up not including, excuse me, not including the esports or some of that coaching lens of it and was, went more towards the teacher piece of it. Um, and some of the components for the room were purchased last year and we know that there's a lot of inflated costs that have occurred. Um, so there were questions about, um, the change from the, that part one towards this piece. If you, if you look at the two applications, there's a significant shift in that funding from, from that coaching and the esports pieces and everything to primarily being supporting the teacher salary, um, leading that work at the middle school rather than sort of that high school, middle school bridge. Um, and, um, another question that was raised is that by dedicating this room, is that a instructional space that is then lost to other things that is critically needed for? So it was just a question that, that came up from the committee. Um, the, and finally, when students would take it? So is it something that when students would be taking this course as compared to others? And it was mentioned that this might be taking the place of, um, some music spaces within eighth grade, um, having a computer science course that all students would be taking as well. This was, uh, recommended to be approved with one opposed and one abstention from the committee.
Can I ask a general question? So I guess when I'm thinking of these, I'm thinking about enrichment. If this is integrating computer science standards, how is that enrichment?
That is good to do. It is something that isn't currently, wouldn't otherwise be there. But that it is, there's teachers and courses that have taken that code.org course, but there is not a dedicated space within the schedule or dedicated aspect of a different curriculum that is teaching it, was the piece. The piece that the committee did also talk about that this gives more of a continuation of that computer science access from the elementary, which is primarily done within, by the library media specialists and up through their other opportunities and selections from the high school that there is not otherwise pulled out in the middle school.
And so they didn't get the enrichment piece, the esports piece from what students?
That, that was done, but it was funded from the high school budget. But it was not funded from the grant.
So we wouldn't be hitting our computer science standards if we didn't do this grant?
I'm sorry?
We wouldn't be hitting our, we wouldn't be integrating our computer.
Not to this degree.
Science standards to any?
Kathy wrote this grant last year.
I remember last year.
To bring in the computer science standards, but we didn't have.
Nope.
This would continue that.
So I have a question. We've always talked about using the paying grants for, for a new position for a trial run, for a year, maybe two years. So has the position from last year, which ended up being funded as opposed to coach, been integrated into the budget for this?
The computer science position I don't believe is in the budget, that's why, that's in the year.
So in the proposal, it was said that, so this is, this is asking for a repeat of the position that wasn't asked for in the grant last year, but did come from the grant last year. So last year they were thinking it was going to be more of a coach role and non-certified teacher. They ended up hiring a certified teacher. So that, but yet that position itself, because it was a different shift than maybe what they had originally applied for, their plan is now that this person would be teaching sort of a full deck of courses, which wasn't the case this year. That proposes that next year they'll be teaching those full digital literacy courses and that it would be like when that world language program was originally implemented and those world languages were integrated, that then that goal would be that following year, that would be a part built within the budget.
All right.
So the level of programming that we're looking to do with this is above and beyond. So there's where the enrichment piece comes in. It's not just meeting the computer science standards, it's teaching the code.org piece that then allows kids to get into the computer science classes at the high school at a higher level. Any other questions? Can I get a motion to support?
Move to support.
Second?
Second.
Jen, second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Great.
One piece I would recommend from this, and I was trying to think of all the things we could do to make this process smoother and better for ever the future. I do think it would be worthwhile for you as a committee to consider that if a grant is approved by the school committee and then if like 20% or more of the line is changed from the original intent to what it is, I do think there should be a public, some sort of public step. This, this work is really intended to be really transparent with what the money is, what it is intended to do and what it is approved to do in a really public setting. So it would just be a recommendation for you to consider, what does that look like if substantially different lines are spent than what was approved in that?
Something for the workshop?
Yeah.
Okay, the final grant that I will share tonight is the middle school, high school STEAM innovation learning spaces. And Kate, your question about what happens if we meet that fiscal cliff, we're a little bit here. So I'll just talk you through that. So this grant is a continuation of a grant that was asked for last year. There was a smaller grant that was asked for last year to have somebody come in and evaluate the STEAM learning spaces in the middle school, high school. So it was somebody, an external person who's an expert in the common course, and that, excuse me, the Massachusetts Science Technology Engineering Standards, came in, evaluated the spaces and wrote a report making recommendations. They made three levels of recommendations, a basic, an interim and then sort of the high level or level three recommendations for the space. The objective of this grant would be to bring learning spaces up to health and safety compliance and also integrate recommendations from the STEAM report so that students and teachers have some flexibility within their learning spaces. The grant funding that's being asked for would fund renovations to two seventh grade math courses, it's like, electricity, plumbing, water access flooring, two seventh grade science classrooms for electricity and so on, and the current high school marine biology room, as well as an investment in flexible furniture to remove the fixed lab stations. So within this grant, really specifically, they were looking to take the current spaces that are relatively set, that have sort of permanently installed spaces and allow for more flexibility. The funding from the grant does include things like plumbing and electricity, it includes furnishment. Some of the questions and concerns that came up for the committee are, this is a little bit where some of our confusions lay in like, how is this not capital request or why wouldn't it have maybe be considered one of those? Why the decision was made to request that middle? So if, if really a big bulk of this is safety, health and safety, that doesn't feel like enrichment and support. So we're wondering if that's level one, how much of it really was innovative or enrichment versus, and then why not? If that, if that level three is really going to take you to beyond, why wouldn't we go for that? And was the reason we didn't go for it was paying right from the funder or because we didn't know if we could? There was a little bit of question of who went through the process of maybe, you know, taking that report in and thinking about what is that support need and why? And we were a little bit, again, sort of that alignment with purpose of the paying grant. So we were at a point with our approvals that we were really torn on this and there was definitely a lot of confusion and questions about whether or not this fell paying right appropriate. And there was a perspective that ThinkCom, ThinkCom perspective was really thinking that like this would feel very appropriate for a capital request and also that they had been wondering if there would be some for the middle school, high school. And if we partially do this, would that actually be duplicating or wasting money that could otherwise go to sort of that tier three? Were some of the conversations and questions. So we did end up taking two, two votes based on how much money we had approved. This was our final grant that we were sort of still torn over. So we took a vote to partially fund the grant and that partial number is purely how much money would have been left based on what we had approved otherwise. We did not go through and say, we want to fund the furniture, we don't want to fund the plumbing. So that number is the number that was based on how much was the disbursement for the grant. So that was approved by the committee with five in favor and one abstention. And then we took a second vote and that vote is to recommend fully funding the grant with an additional 165 plus thousand dollars from this year's current allocation and the leftover fund bucket. For those who are new, the paying grant, I think it was two years ago or maybe three, made that recommendation that any unspent funds from previous years can be considered and you can go through a process to approve and recommend funding other pieces in addition. That vote fell with three in favor, two opposed and one abstention.
Thoughts?
I kind of agree with the idea of if this is supposed to be enrichment, why aren't we going for number three?
Yeah, so level three was the second floor on that wing.
Oh, okay.
That was, that was, it literally was.
In the potential of the ballpark of one, two million.
The pie in the sky, level three would be a second story on that wing over there that would have brand new marine biology type spaces and more, you know,
That's a lot.
more lab space for, for different things that we're looking to do. As a result of that report, I, I, I believe I gave the report to the school committee. From Jake?
I don't think we received it.
No? Okay.
I got the, as the STEAM representative, the gentleman who was doing the study came and spoke to STEAM team.
Yeah, yeah.
But I don't think we've had that here.
All right.
I have, why are we funding health and safety through a paying grant? That's my concern.
So, so the, I think that the most concise answer without getting into the weeds is that we funded the paying grant last year for the subject area expert to come in and look at our, our science programs. Building's 20 plus years old, the equipment is 20 plus years old and, you know, either not working or in disrepair. And, and, you know, the teaching methods have changed, the equipment has changed, you know, the technology has changed. And so we, we wrote the grant last year to have Jake come in and do that study. He met with all of the science teachers, middle and high school, met with the math departments, middle and high school, met with the STEAM team, met with the administrators, looked at all of the spaces in, in the middle and high school and then, you know, took that and, and, you know, based on our conversations, came up with the three levels. You know, level one is just the bare bones to, to bring us into safety and health compliance.
But why aren't we there?
Because we weren't, I don't think that we realized that, that we weren't there. You know, when I say safety and health compliance, you know, it's, it's new, new equipment, new lab equipment in the, in the spaces. We have, we have, yeah, sinks that don't work.
One example they gave was, so like, so for example, like this, so when they're doing labs that require electricity, they're running power strips and there's cords on the floor. So one of the sort of safety pieces with that, you have that electrical piece be able to come from the ceiling so you're not doing cords along the floor. That was one of the sort of safety examples that was included in this.
It's not like we're currently out of health and safety compliance.
Just we're not up to current standards of practice.
Right, and so we're trying to, we're trying to correct that. You know, in, in terms of answering the, the capital request, you know, we have a five-year capital plan. We'd rather not wait five years to put this in, you know, get this into the plan and have it happen five years down the line. And so, you know, there's, that was the, the thinking was we can do a lot with, with a paying grant to get this process started and get us down the road. So understanding that the, the second story on, on the technology wing is out of reach right now.
I guess here's my other more practical question. I mean, if there's health and safety concerns, I feel like the school needs to be budgeting for that. That shouldn't be something that we're relying on a paying grant to bring something up to code, if that's what we're talking about. But then also keeping in mind the general atmosphere we're living in right now and inflation and how much supplies are costing and supply chain issues, is this the time to be doing a heavy plumbing, electricity remodel of, is this financially the most responsible? I, I, I mean, obviously this is, I'd love to see all this happen, but is this the financially responsible time in our economy, in our current situation to be doing this?
Do we have a sense of how the money breaks down? Like of the $264,000, how much is bringing things up to health and safety compliance versus the good stuff we actually want?
There was a combination, right? So there's sort of the plumbing and the electrical that was part of the grant. Then there was sort of like the removal and disposal is another big piece. So sort of the, the lab tables that are like built into the wall or any other sort of furniture that would be. So that's a big piece of it. And then that third big bucket is sort of the flexible furniture. So investing in that flexible furniture that they could then relocate. So whether they're doing sort of a hands-on lab or more of a lecture style that can be flexed. So those are the three big buckets. I didn't pull up each of the specific money reports, so I can't tell you off the top of my head.
You know, so my thought is on the capital piece, in a perfect world, I think that this, this would certainly be a capital project. But I, we're also facing some pretty significant capital projects coming down the road that we've already, were to put in our five-year capital plan, but also other capital things that will be popping up with our elementary schools that we'll need to address sooner rather than later. I think that this is a good way to improve and enhance the existing facilities we have to bring our science rooms up to a level that is needed for our programs to be competitive and give the kids the education they need. So, I mean, I would support fully funding it. And I think to your point, Emily, I agree with you on one hand, but this is also something if approved, really have a year to do it. It has to go over bid, it has to, you know, so it's not, I think from a cost standpoint, I think, you know, inflation's obviously an issue, but I think we're at a point in time where our economy is starting to hit that tipping point and go down. We're seeing material costs come down, we're seeing demand for projects like this come down. And I think it'll continue to, so I don't necessarily think that the cost issue will be a huge problem.
I see like a remodel that's like any other remodel that once you start, you're in and then what's $263,000 quickly becomes, well, it's actually 300 and then oh, once we start it. And I just, I mean, I agree with you, I think this is awesome and I think it's needed and it's, but that piece of it in this economy worries me because then once you're started, what happens if?
Goes over?
Significant, I mean, even if it goes 50,000 over. What does that look like?
Yeah, how, how? I think they're going to have to be cognizant of the work and how they, how they orchestrate it so that we don't have six classrooms.
But you can't control that right now, there's supply chain issues, there's labor shortage, there's, but that's what I'm saying, like.
You know, organize it in such a way that, you know, they're doing a number of different spaces, so not ripping apart all six spaces, say, at once. But rather, if we, we can do these two classrooms right now, get them done, move on to the next two. Things like that.
Is that maybe the way to break it down then is to do it piece by piece as opposed to do the funding all at once? I mean, I, I don't, I guess I'm just trying to think practically about something.
But if this is the budget, they can't exceed it. So to Brian's point, if they're kind of doing it room by room rather than gutting the whole thing and doing it all at once and running the risk that it's going to go over by 50 grand, that's, you know.
Right, and then you hit the last room and you're like, oh, sorry, we ran out of money.
Three quarters of the way done.
Yeah, I don't, I, I don't know how these things work when it comes to a grant for something like this. I sort of get it for the equipment and I get it for, and maybe I'm overthinking the whole thing, which is definitely possible.
Well, it's a very specific number too, where, how did they come up with that?
They did have quotes or generalizations for some parts of it. So some parts it looks like they had costed out like the furniture, whereas others it looks like they had more generalization of numbers of estimated cost for plumbing or electrical or as well.
This, I have a, I have an issue with the slippery slope of the paying grants. And in the parentheses in the paragraph, electricity, plumbing, water access and flexible furniture and flooring repair are all in the same parentheses. And flexible furniture, I know that we've supported through paying grants in elementary schools and, but to couple that in with flooring repair and water access. We've had elementary school issues in the past that haven't been fixed. Like this just doesn't feel like a paying grant. And if we're going to do this, like how are we historically, are we going to go back and say, well, you know what? There's a, there's a terrible plumbing issue in elementary schools and they need more, you know, better sinks. Okay, well, then let's apply for paying grant. Like I, I just think there's a slippery slope. We're creating something that I don't think has been done before, but plumbing and water access and flooring as enrichment.
Yeah, I would think of, at least the way I would think of it, is your example of plumbing issues at the elementaries would be a capital project because it's, it's upgrading the stuff that's already there. Versus this project, it's, it's basically redesigning the rooms to bring them up to standards that are in place now that weren't 20 years ago. And in order to do that, the infrastructure needs to be redesigned, you know. So it's not necessarily saying, let's take a, you know, take a locker room and redesign it and get a paying grant to cover that. We just redid the boys locker room two years ago and that was a capital project. That's, in my mind, that's the way I look at the difference between those. Others have thoughts? Sure.
So, so I, I struggled with that as well in the beginning. What I longed up wrapping my head around was that we're taking it kind of beyond.
Ted, you want to come up to the microphone?
Just state your name and who you're, who you are for the record.
Start over.
Thank you.
Ted Spinallo. So I, I struggled with that as well in the beginning, whether this was even appropriate to be spoken about. And after digging into it, what I felt was that, again, I'm always speaking for myself, that this was taking us beyond bare bones minimum and up to the next level. Granted, it's not the, the third wing pie in the sky that we would all love to be able to do. But we were able to get STEM, STEAM, which is clearly a growing side of this, and make sure that our kids are in the, at least in the upper echelon, if not the best. Just to bring it beyond, if we, like you could do plumbing and electricity and that's bringing you up to bare bones minimum. That's how I wrapped my head around how this became enrichment versus just a capital group. Is there a capital improvement aspect to it to make that happen? Yes, there is. But I think it's wrapped up in, part of the flooring is going to be when you remove the old stationary tables, something's going to have to get put back in there. So part of it is just when you're removing out that to put in the flexible furniture so that the kids can gather around the teacher as they do their displays, that, that flow. that you've now just removed is just gonna be a hole. So that has to get replaced one way or the other.
I guess I, I get that, and I, I wish there was a way to fund the capital piece of it differently, because all I'm thinking is, this is fantastic. Our kids are getting rained on in the elementary schools every time it rains. And how are we...
Ripping up a perfectly good floor.
Right, right.
Right.
I don't, I guess that's the, that's the piece I'm having a really hard time. I totally understand. I love this. I put the third floor on the side, whatever. I think that's amazing. I'm just, it's the capital piece, if there was some way to...
Well, that kind of gets behind my question of, you know, is the capital piece 20,000, or is it 120,000, or 220,000? Like, what portion of it is? And I know you don't know, but...
I, I, I can't quote that.
No, I know, and I'm not asking to. I'm just...
Yeah, and I think Ted said it beautifully. I think is sort of this one is like all of the above, where it feels like it's enrichment and enhancement. It feels like it's basic, you know, operational facilities, and it feels like it could be capital, because depending on the lens you look at it, we really struggled. That's why you see such a distribution of, of where we fell, because it was, this was really hard for us to process, and it was really big. Um, yeah, we struggled with this.
Yeah.
So if we, you know, option one, or vote number one to partially fund the grant, what's that really get us ripped up floors?
I think that doesn't help us if that's less than the amount of the capital improvement. I wonder, would, would we benefit from seeing what tier one of the consultant's report entailed, if that was bringing us up just to life, safety, you know, those issues, and seeing what that cost was? And then maybe revisiting this once we have the benefit of, of seeing what the difference between tier one and tier two were?
Yeah, that's a good point. Why don't we, why don't we just defer this? We'll table this till our next meeting. We can get some more information on what each of these options looks like, broken out, and then we can vote it then.
I don't have access to any, then, other than this share, but I'm happy to share what this budget breakdown was for the proposal. We weren't provided with the tier one award.
Yeah, I can get that.
Okay, okay, great.
Thank you.
So, um, I know you all still have cardio room conversations to still have. Um, so I don't know if you wanna do that now, or if you want me to wrap?
Yeah, why don't we circle back on the cardio room discussion? Um, so I guess, kind of thinking this through, since we just, we talked about it. I would tend to defer to the committee. I, I know what I would like there, and I know what we need. Um, but I would defer to the paying grant committee and how they voted, because they did dig into the questions, and they, uh, and I think it is on the applicant in the future to maybe make things a little more clear. Um, and, you know, since it was, you know, voted five to one to oppose it, um, I, you know, I feel like I don't have enough information here to determine, or to, to sort of go against that vote. Um, but again, I, I would encourage the applicant in the future to maybe come back with a little more detailed plan as to how this could work next year. I don't know what anyone else's thoughts are.
Kind of the same way. I mean, I think in the past, I think more with traversal weatherall grants, but we have basically said, can you, you rewrite this? And, you know, this isn't, you know, this isn't clear enough. We aren't fully understanding this, and maybe it just needs to come back next year. Rewrite more clear, with a clearer intention and plan.
I thought we had sent grants back and said we have questions before we can vote one way or the other. I just think...
Emily, the only one that I've experienced, um, has been the, the, the only one that was sent back, um, in, I'm in year four, I think, was the website, which did not actually get that on.
The website, and there was a couple, there was, um, one with like, it's like a gym thing with watches and tracking kids, and...
That was before my time, so I can't speak to that.
No, you were there. You heard...
Was that a paying grant, though, or was that a traversal weatherall?
Yep, no, that was a paying...
Paying grant?
It was paying, and it was...
It was the one, remember the controversy, was the kids, their exercise would show up on a board, and it would be anonymous.
There were a couple that we've sent back, and said we have...
So it was a combination of like gym equipment?
It seemed like easy questions to answer.
Well, the only, the only, the only issue I have with that, the only issue I have with that is that, correcting you if I'm wrong, Heather, I think your committee already asked, you already sent it back for further clarification, and didn't, the, the response didn't get you to a point where you felt then that it was...
Yes. So the process that we go through, we read the grant, we, we build our questions. Those questions are shared with the applicant before their presentation. They present, we meet and, and talk based on all the information that we have. So the questions that we have weren't answered. I think there's, um, I think there's maybe questions about the framing of it, that it might be that it hadn't, it wasn't there yet at that point.
Yeah. Yeah, again, I, you know, I respect all the work and time your group puts in. And, you know, I'd, I'd rather see a, maybe a better application next year for a project like this, if that's the intent. The, I, I think part of, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I just realized that I have the budget request for the STEAM room as part of the grant. Like, I have the breakdown of what's capital and what's furniture, if you wanted to look at it tonight.
Let me, let me provide that, the report, though, so you, so you have it in context as well.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
In, in terms of, um, yeah, lost my thought. In, in terms of the, the, this grant, and we saw the other grant earlier that didn't get funded, because it's an alternative funding source, there may be, you know, an opportunity to fund this in some other way. I think part of the, one of the nice things about the grants in general is that it gives folks the opportunity to write about things that they're interested in, or, or identify things that they feel could be enhanced, or, or enriching, or just, you know, novel ideas. And so, um, you know, the, the one grant was, was written, nobody's looked at those record boards in the, in the, uh, the lower gym for years. But one of the coaches said, you know what, these are really outdated, they're, they're almost impossible to, to change out, the, the records when, when kids break records. Half of the events that are up there, we don't even participate in anymore. Let's fix them. And so, he wrote a grant, submitted it, but then we, when, when we saw it, we said, well, that, we have other funding sources. So, so IEF is, is stepping up to replace that. So I think one of the nice things about this grant process is, first of all, folks are taking a lot of time to write the grants. So, to, to just say no is, isn't, doesn't feel good. But it also raises the awareness that there's an issue, or a concern, or, or a desire to do something different. So this, this grant is, is a perfect example. Now, maybe we can't do it through the paying grant process for one reason or another, but, oh, okay, so it's $30,000. Is there, is there another opportunity somewhere to do that? I don't know.
I don't know what protocol is or has been, but I'm more than happy to meet with any of the, so when the, after the committee does meet, I do let the applicants know, this is what the committee decided. Here were some of our questions or concerns. This is the recommendation we'll make to school committee. I'm always happy to follow back up as well, if there are any that aren't, to give feedback about. This is what we felt was missing, and you were considering reapplying. Here's the components that, um, maybe didn't score as well on rubrics that the committee was seeking. So I'm also happy, if that feels appropriate to the school committee, to provide that bridge as well for folks who, who might be interested in pursuing in future years.
Great. Any other comments? All right, can I get a motion?
Are we voting then? The cardio, cardio room?
What? No.
Oh.
Yeah, motion to, I guess, not recommend the cardio room grant. Anyone?
Motion to not...
To, to, I guess, motion to support, motion to support the, motion to support the vote of the paying grant committee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay, great.
So that sort of leads into, and I'm just gonna...
Wait, I do have a question. Sorry, no, we just voted. I know, and asleep. How much money is in the, the residual account that we can draw from, which might...
340-ish?
370,000?
Is in the residual account?
Is in the bucket.
Is in the bucket.
Maybe something that we can draw on right now. So we can draw, what about?
It's next on the agenda if you need it.
Cause we haven't closed it yet.
Well, it just seems...
So we have 90,000 left?
$300,000 sitting there, and we have, we're not funding a 30,000.
So we have $90,000 left from last year's grants that have not been spent.
And then we use the, there's like 300-something thousand previously, but we use that to reduce the, uh, most residual cost.
The draw.
Yeah.
Okay.
Don't have that much in the residual?
So we have, I'm trying to think if we have about 90,000.
Okay, that's what I'm thinking.
In our account.
In our account.
That's what I'm thinking. Okay, thanks.
So I just, I want to take, I'll be really brief on this, but, um, since there was a chance, I wanted to share some recommendations. There's a lot of pieces that I think, as a committee chair, I want to do better, and, and supporting folks in the future. And so I just wanted to propose some of these thoughts for you all. Um, one being that applications and committee recommendations occur earlier in the year. You've all just experienced, if there is a question, if there is a need to go back, if there is a wondering about, um, we don't really have a whole lot of time left. Um, so, knowing that we are really triggered by when the FFFIs provide their disbursement of the money, um, we were hoping to be considered if there's an earlier space that we can, um, begin this process, begin the applications. Um, because as I mentioned, we do evaluate them based on the rubric that was provided to us, and the vision and goals, not necessarily the, the money that is left. Cause that's our, our job is to make the recommendations. You all have to make the tricky decision with that. Um, so that's a piece is, is starting the process earlier in the year, so that you get the information earlier, and it's also not up against crunch time. Um, I have to shout out Principal Mitchell, who literally attended a two-hour meeting, well, from a boat, on the cruise in Boston Harbor, and he was in this meeting. So, I mean, they're just, and I'm sure it was not nearly as fun as some of the music we heard in the background. So, you know, it's, it's, kudos for him to really be such a dedicated member of the committee, but he shouldn't have to be that time of year. So that, that's one recommendation. Um, another recommendation is that some clarity on the grants. And, and Dr. Blake, you just sort of provided a great pun for this to, to leave off. What grants are there in Ipswich? Um, what is the purpose of each of the grants? And if we had more transparency or clarity for applicants who knew which grant might be the right place to apply, it wouldn't feel this like challenging piece of, we did spend a lot of time like, is this the right place for this?
We actually had that conversation during our IEF meeting earlier in the week, and that's something that the leadership team is gonna take up over the summer, is identifying each grant opportunity, as well as additional funding sources that we have in, in town for different, different projects.
That would be incredibly helpful.
Cause they're not always formal grants, but folks that we can call.
But I think that would support a lot of making sure that, that when we, when folks have applied, they already know this is the right place to apply. Um, and that's maybe a piece as well, um, within the application. So we would recommend that you consider adding in a piece of the application, of knowing, is it a repeat grant, or do you expect it to be a repeat grant? Because there's a lot of conversation about that. Um, if we get to the point that we have all repeat grants, then essentially we're not ever evaluating them. Um, and then you essentially block off money that can't be spent otherwise. Um, and including that, that approval assures alignment to the grant purposes, that, that we really are being tight, so that the committee knows if it's there, it really is not, is it capital, or is it some of those pieces. Um, and then my final advocacy is, is I wanna work hard to encourage more broad applications. This year, 71% of the grant money was pressed from administration, 29% from teachers. Um, and I did the breakdown of the last three years. Um, and there's been a vast majority of the grants that are applied for by administration. Part of that is because they're serving larger numbers and serving wider schools, so I wanna recognize that. Their numbers are naturally gonna be larger. Um, however, administration does have access to district budget and building budget, where teachers don't necessarily. And so, one of the pieces that I'm hoping that we can do, um, I'd like to do like a how do you apply for a grant tutorial in the fall, so that's supporting folks, so that when they apply, it's not a matter of, it might be a good idea, but this grant doesn't show us. But really, it's sort of helping people understand, what does that grant application process look like? What do you have to do? Um, what are those components that are evaluated on? The rubric is public, so you should know what those pieces are, um, to help both, hopefully, encourage the folks who might not otherwise apply. And we'd love to see a 50/50. I, I don't, I won't say we, I'd love to see a 50/50 of teacher and administrator requests. Um, but also to make sure that, again, that the approval of the grant is, is more a matter of, of making sure that we're doing that sort of work, rather than, is this the right place, or, or it might be good, we can't tell from the application. So, those would just recommendations that would be considered. So as we move forward, we can continue to support the amazing things that are happening.
Great.
Thank you, Heather.
Yeah.
Great job. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And thank you, Jeff and Beth.
Okay. Celtic started six minutes ago. Let's move on to the finance update.
I'll keep this incredibly short and sweet. Um, so we're looking to close out the fiscal year. Um, just a couple weeks left now. Um, I typed up a little quick memo, just to give you guys a brief summary. I'll just highlight some of those really quickly. Um, when I ran this initially, we were about 97, or almost 98% expended. Since then, when I'm running it today, we're actually at 99% expended. So that's how kind of quickly you can see, as we do the remaining payrolls, and, um, some of the last bills come in, that the budget will get fully expended. Um, SRR funding, SRR 1's fully expended, SRR 2, 75% expended. And then, we have about 10% expended of SRR 3, which, um, we expect, cause that's really mainly used to support 23 and beyond. Um, we have 4.2 million in our gift and revolving funds, um, with a large chunk of that being our choice. Um, and then our stabilization funds have 4.6 million in them. Um, that includes the 1.3 that we, um, transferred back from the 22 unexpended, and does not account for the drawdown yet for 23. So, once that drawdown occurs, we'll have 2.7 million. Um, and that's about it. But any questions that I can answer for anyone, as we close out the year?
I just wanted to mention the school lunch issues. So I know that there is a pending bill that was in the House budget, you know, that would have universal free lunch for all K through 12 students in Massachusetts. Um, I know, Representative Belcito was a co-sponsor of that. Um, it does not seem that there's support of that right now in the Senate, so I don't think it's gonna be part of the budget. Um, then here, there, there's just an indication of potential increases. And I wonder, what does that elevated surplus account that weighs about 400 and something thousand, like, is that enough to be able to kind of weigh through transitory inflationary costs?
Yeah.
And, and what do we think about being able to absorb some of that money to reduce cost, or keep cost level?
Sure, yeah. So, um, the food service director and I have had a handful of conversations about this already. Um, and while that balance can help soften, um, those increases, um, and make them, we're trying to make them as nominal as possible. But even with that, that we would, the food service revolving fund would still lose money next year, because things have just skyrocketed so much for them, if we don't do at least some nominal increases. So, you know, we're trying to hold out as long as we possibly could, because obviously, we don't wanna come out with increases if we're gonna have, um, free lunch for everyone. So, once we get the final, final word on that, um, then we'll come forward on to you with what those would look like, and some, some recommendations. Um, because you don't have to do sweeping price increases, you can do it just on à la carte items if you want. So, you know, whatever the committee has an appetite to do.
Mm-hmm. No pun intended.
Yeah.
My kids seem to buy a lot of ice creams, so...
Yep.
Raise the price on the ice cream.
Funny.
Yeah, I am, I think. I'm subsidizing it myself. Okay. Any questions for Cheryl?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, we circulated, or email was circulated, and I think Kate and I did a follow-up email, um, mentioning that there's two liaison positions open. Um, I'll mention the town manager interview committee liaison first. Um, Jen responded and said she'd be interested.
Would be.
Didn't know if anyone else wanted to be considered for that, or if we're comfortable having Jen do it. I certainly am.
I'll just say that I, um, I saw that there's also a business owner or leader, um, that they're looking for, and I thought, well, I could try that one, but it would be hard to take off the school committee hat. But if I was the school committee member, I could also just have the business owner in, in me for that purpose.
Okay. All right. Can I get a motion to appoint Jen as the town manager interview committee liaison for the school committee?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Great. Anyone interested in the climates, climate resiliency committee position? Chubb held this position previously. Um, I know that they have, I believe they have a meeting coming up. previously. I know that they have, I believe they have a meeting coming up soon, maybe next week. I'll have to double check, but any takers?
Does he meet? Monthly? Weekly?
I believe it's monthly.
And it's not on Thursdays?
What?
No.
It's not on Thursdays?
Oh. It's Carl before Chubb, I think. Yep.
Hold on a second. I'm just looking for Mike Johnson's email.
How soon do we, they want us to decide soon?
Yeah. Yeah, we'd have to decide. Ideally, tonight. Meetings every third Tuesday of the month. Next meeting is June twenty-first. You want to do that, Bob? Okay. We'll do a point, Bob.
Second.
All in favor?
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bob.
Okay, listening session outreach planning. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Um, sure. So, listening sessions are scheduled for July twenty-sixth and August first, I believe. So we need to kind of discuss outreach planning. There's a flyer that was developed. Thank you, Laura, for that, with some information pulled from our newsletter. So that is in your meeting packet. So we just wanted some, I can't find it right now. We wanted some feedback on that, and then some sort of discussion around, you know, outreach and getting the word out.
Are these dates for the second round firm and locked in?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. Oh, and there are edits since I last looked at it. So there's been a fifth session for each round for a remote option, which is exciting. So round one, so there's two sessions on July twenty-sixth. No, that's it.
No, that's it. That's the most recent.
Yeah. Sorry, update since I last looked at it. So two on the twenty-sixth, two on the first, and one on August second. That will be a remote option. So, can I?
Yep. Feedback quick?
Yeah.
One is, I'd like to see this highlighting Bill, is he's moderating and doing the listening sessions, right? This says the school committee is committed to facilitating, and I don't think, I think the importance of having a facilitator and using him is that he is facilitating, we are listening. So maybe an eye towards, or think about, an eye towards that. And then the other potential red flag that I see in this, I mean, I think it's phenomenal. I think it's really well done. I would recommend avoiding the quick recap of some key facts from the last project, because there are no key facts, and I think that was one of the major problems, is that everybody has a different version of what is the fact and what actually happened and what that fact really meant. I think that begs for debate, and that begs for, well, they presented it this way, and it really was that way. And I would really strongly prefer to see Bill take the lead on this, not include a quick recap, unless he does a very sanitized recap, but no key facts, we're starting from scratch. I think we want to avoid even debating history at this point. Like, this is, we are here to listen to the community. We are here to have an independent person facilitate these sessions. So those would be, those are the two things that really jump out to me, is I thought that's why we were using Bill.
So to answer your first question, that paragraph in blue that says the school committee is committed to facilitating a transparent and inclusive process, that was meant to be the whole process? Not?
Right.
I see your point. And maybe we should reword it.
So it's language. Yeah.
Right. So, not these evenings particularly.
Right.
So I agree, that could be confusing. So we can work on rewording that sentence. But I think the spirit of the sentence.
Yep.
Is good.
Dead on.
So we'll.
I wonder, is it just the school committee is committed to a transparent and inclusive process and takeout facilitating and?
Yeah, that might be the use.
Yes. Yes. Good. Yeah. Thank you. See, that's good. Okay, so that was the easy one. The second comment. I mean, I think the, again, the spirit of that recap was, I think, and correct me if you have a different impression, Brian, but was that Bill had, Bill O, the facilitator, had suggested having a recorded kind of intro
Yeah.
of where we are now, including, this is all up for discussion.
I can, I can jump in.
Okay.
Essentially, looking at, you know, the state of the current buildings, where they are now, the conditions, needed repairs, et cetera, potential costs of repairs to simply maintain them, which are increasing over time, and then just referencing the history of the unsuccessful vote.
Yeah, I would not do that.
Well, I don't think we can ignore the fact that we, that a project came forward and it failed.
Everybody knows. Nobody needs to have a recap.
I don't think so.
I don't know if everybody does. A lot of new families in town.
There might be, but, I mean.
I mean, we're talking about a whole new, if you had a kid in first grade back then, your child is now in the middle school, and it's a whole different population, or a large population of new parents.
I had a kid in kindergarten. We're all, I don't know. I would just.
See, I feel like the opposite, almost. I feel like everybody's heard stuff that may or may not be true.
But nobody has a consensus on the truth, which is, which is the careful.
But there are some things that happened that are.
That, so then keep it very straight, like.
Yeah.
There was a vote, it failed to pass, and moving forward. I would not, I would not spend a lot of time and energy in that space.
And so, so continuing with that, you know, identifying the issue, why we need to have this conversation about, you know, new building, buildings, what the challenge is in that MSBA process, what that looks like, and the fact that in order to bring anything forward, we're going to have to have some, some high level of consensus before we do that, you know, in order to enhance the likelihood that we're going to be accepted back into, into the process. And then give just a high-level overview of the timelines for MSBA in terms of what that looks like, we're submitting an SOI, and if we were to get in, what the, what the process is. So people, so people are aware of, you know, where we're headed, because this isn't a one-year process. We're looking at.
I think all that's helpful. It's the history piece that I would really like.
Yeah.
It's enough to know that it happened and it failed and.
Well, and Bill has experience with this. He did this similar thing in Amherst, and that's why we brought him on. So I'm confident that he'll, he'll be able to gauge what we.
Yeah, I would just, in the wording of this, when I'm reading it and seeing, like, which key facts, who's picking the key facts, where do those key, like?
That, that sentence is, it hits a, it strikes.
It's, again, it's just language.
Yeah. So that, it says, "The first round will include a quick recap of some key facts from the last project, comma." What about leaving that out?
Yeah.
Because I think he, yeah, we do need consensus. We do, this is, this is going to get people stirred up. And I think there was a vote, but everybody's key facts are different. And their perception of facts are different. An update on the current state of the elementary schools, that's what you just read. Like, that, that's appropriate.
Relevant.
Yeah, and relevant. And then I like what you said about the MSBA and the process, like, the goal of the listening session and this timeline, in a last meeting, you mentioned, well, town meeting is October. So what, what is the goal of coming out of the listening session?
To know what we want to go for.
Well, is there something?
To know where the community stands on anything.
But what's first? Submitting an SOI, a town meeting vote? Like, what is the?
The SOI, no.
The SOI would come out of these listening sessions. This is sort of the beginning to then help us frame an SOI to submit next spring.
Next spring?
Yeah.
So what was the, at our last school committee meeting, you mentioned an October town meeting and having September listening sessions prior to an October town meeting. So I just wonder.
If there were anything that we needed to bring to town meeting, we would have to have it prepared by then. I'm not sure that we have to have a vote. There was some discussion about throughout this process of potentially having some sort of a, you know, a non-binding vote at town meeting to give, you know, to get even more of a sense of something related to the project, locations, configuration, whatever it may be. We're not sure that that's a requirement to submit an SOI.
Okay.
So, again, hopefully these listening sessions give us what we need as a committee to determine the proper path forward to get that SOI submitted in the spring.
Okay. So I think that's a, that's a big data point for me, if we're trying to have something voted on at October town meeting or not, as a result of these listening sessions. So I don't know if it needs to be put in this flyer for communication about SOI timeline. Like, maybe people need to be drawn.
Right. Well, and if we go with this, we may, the full town meeting may be a non-issue because half of these meetings are going to occur, or two of these meetings are occurring after town meeting, so. I mean, the process is the important piece, not.
Yeah, I think that's important. Yeah, just quick recap, key facts.
I think we need to show, you know, what's at stake. Like, you have to kind of, it's just like the fourteen over I didn't pass, you know, what was learned, and then it makes, okay, the Sabbath church, or then pass the fifteen. It's kind of like the same idea in all the school buildings. Kind of have to go there a little bit and say, okay, this time we really need to make it work.
Right. Because it's, yeah. And part of that's the condition of this.
Yeah, I think we can do that.
Because they're even, the needs even bigger. And, but I think there is a big element of, we don't, I don't think anyone wants to repeat the process we had.
Right. And we're not, nothing we've done is like that.
I think, even just to go there to say that, you know.
Yeah. We're learning from, we're learning from past processes and trying to, you know, move forward with a, in a different manner to not have a failed vote happen again.
I mean, the issue I see, obviously, is we've got the first round of listening sessions July twenty-sixth. It's coming up quick, so we need to get the word out. We need to talk about how we do that, who's in charge of doing that. And, you know, ideally get a plan together, or some volunteers to get a plan together tonight so that we can get this going.
So if we make this few edits to the flyer, can we send them out in backpacks?
Yeah, like printed, not in this electronic smores that nobody knows how to print and you have to scroll through on your phone.
Yeah, we should stick them in the windows of all the stores downtown.
Yeah.
But if we, I mean, it's because school is quickly wrapping up.
Yeah. So we've already, we've already lost the high school kids, because Tuesday is only a makeup day for exams, so it's not, you're not going to have many in the high school. I don't know that we can, I don't know that we can get that flyer done and out by Tuesday morning to all the schools to go in backpacks.
To the elementarys?
Yeah. Because you're, you're off tomorrow.
Yeah, on Monday. So it would be, unless we have edits now, it's tough to get it out.
Well, then we're going to have to email.
Well, people be watching the mail for those little letters saying your child's library book is overdue. Yes, I do.
Yeah, our class placement.
It's already going out in my messaging tomorrow. I already have my message queued up. So there's a paragraph in there about the first sessions and the dates for, you know, and to be on the lookout for this pamphlet. Okay. More information. So what else do we do?
That's all right.
No?
I have some dash right here. I love the content on this, but if we're thinking we're going to like paste it somewhere, I would not stop to look at this. I think we need like, you put a picture of each elementary school or something, then it's going to, what's going on here, you know?
That's a good idea.
I like that.
We could do a second graphic. I mean, this is the flyer that goes around to everybody, and that's something that's more like dates, and it's the bare bones.
It's easier to.
Yeah, so we just need people to.
Do it.
Start talking. Yeah, to do it, to do that. Because I don't, you know, I don't want to.
And I assume we're pushing it out on social media, various Ipswich Facebook pages, things like that. So if someone can volunteer to kind of manage that, it'd be great.
I'm happy to do the social media part of it, or Dana wants to do it. Or even if, you know, if we could get Laura to post Ipswich, whatever, pages, forget. Ipswich Public Schools, something, we can cross-share, and that's, that's easy.
Would it be helpful if one of us went with you to rotary to talk with them about it in the next meeting, or can you do it, or, I mean, I'm happy to go with you. Yeah.
Two weeks, I can go.
Okay. Do we have other ideas for getting this out, messaging out?
So the mailing of, I know for elementary schools, it comes in the mail, your class list.
Yeah.
I know that, I asked Amy Sullivan last night at a Fries meeting, when, she said kindergartners probably won't get their list until August first. But I think the, every grade other than that in the elementary school gets something in the mail in July.
Could you reach out to the principals and ask them if we could get them flyers, if they could?
I can do that.
Okay.
Okay.
So you're doing that, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's a good idea. Get something in a paper.
Yeah.
Yeah. Do we have to pay for that? A little bit of letter to the editor.
Something to any reporter who's reporting on this meeting.
We should, we should see if we can get it into the Ipswich paper, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had birth to three and preschool directors. Those might be.
Do we want?
I'm going to have all those contacted.
Council on Aging?
Yeah.
I'll do birth to three and preschool stakeholders.
I can do council on aging.
And maybe say, do birth to three, I mean, like, reach out, email them the flyer, and they can email each other, or reach out.
Yeah. Yeah. I can email it, and then if they want it copied or something, we can provide them with.
Okay. I have all the preschool directors' email addresses.
Thank you, too.
Okay.
First class is tricky.
So can you send out that list of who's doing what, so we don't remember?
Yeah. What about other town, I wrote down, how can other town boards help us? Or other town, how else can we?
Select Board should announce it at their meeting. Or when's their next meeting? I'm happy to go and at Citizens Comments.
Yeah.
Later Mondays, every other Monday.
You want to do that?
Yeah, when is the next one? You'd have to look it up.
Shouldn't we do the same with FinCom?
Probably with FinCom, yeah.
I can do FinCom.
Okay.
And then the only other thing I have is, again, if we get a second mail, flyer, that's more, less words, more.
Graphic.
Facts, graphic. So someone to design that, and then putting them up around town. You know, the Y, the post office, the library, the. You know, the Y, the post office, the library, the.
Open stores downtown.
I'm happy to talk to the chamber as well, and the Ipswich Business Roundtable meets every couple of weeks, and so I can speak to them just to spread the word, and also try to see who's willing to put a sign up.
Okay, good. Diana can do the design.
You can maybe design a flyer and circulate it to us, and we can, yeah, I agree, I like this one, but I think, I think another version that's just like.
Boom, boom, boom.
This is what we're making, like, when, where, why, I think.
Simple.
Okay, so then we can all just kind of pitch in for distribution, I think, around town, or I'm happy to do that. And then I have social media, too.
So the only other thing that I have about listening sessions is a survey. Was that something that Bill was going to help us?
I, I think so, I have not talked to him about that, but that was something that we had considered earlier on.
That's another tricky one, that how it's crafted, what wording.
Yeah, so the, the survey is going to, just, it's going to be an opportunity for folks to, to participate in the, in a different way in the listening session, so it would be the same guiding questions that they'll be able to respond to.
Yeah, there's going to be like four, so framing questions.
And then open-ended?
Yeah, I think so.
So less survey and more submission, yeah.
Yeah, survey's maybe not a great word.
Is there another word? Stay tuned for a survey in the next weeks.
That was the word that Bill used, so I just left it, I don't.
I don't know.
I didn't hear what you said, Brian.
That was the word that Bill used, was to do the survey. Yeah, I'm really freaked out, we need to.
Yeah.
Stay tuned for a request of your feedback.
Please participate in coming or through written submissions.
And then if that's electronic, how is that going to be dispersed, all before the first one?
We would just have to provide links to it, again, on social media, on, I think the other place we need to put it that I didn't write down was our school website, like, on this splash page, of like, you know, the listening sessions, and then a link to the survey, too.
One other thing, too, could also reach out to the sports, these get access to, have their league directors potentially send this out to their database, too, it would be helpful if we can get a good group of parents there.
Volunteer for that?
Sure.
Okay, so I'll send out a summary of who agreed to what.
Okay, great. All right, let's move on to overnight field trip requests.
Yes, so in your, in your packet this evening is the overnight field trip request for the close-up program that Mr. Krieger runs. This is a program that runs every year. I told them you didn't need to come back yet again to the school committee for the same field trip, so you have all the information in your, in your packets or review.
Awesome trip, my son ran on it, loved it, great experience, your daughter went off, too, right?
Yep.
I think it's, it's great every year they run it, and this was the first year they've had it in a couple of years due to COVID. Not just a vacation to walk around DC, it's very educationally focused, and their days are jam-packed with things to do, so it's definitely worthwhile, trip. We get a motion to support?
Someone?
Second.
All in favor? unanimous?
Okay, Superintendent's Administrative Report. It's been a whirlwind of events since our last meeting, beginning with the graduation on Saturday the 5th. We had 138 students walk across the stage, it was a great day, beautiful day, a little, little windy.
It was, yeah, it's hard to keep the, the plants on the stage.
It was a great day, having it outside, though, it was perfect. We also had the high school symphony orchestra performance, underclassmen awards night, and the middle school spring choral concert. Speaking of our music department, I want to let folks know that Jerry Dolan has decided to actually retire this year, and focus his work at Gordon, focus more on his work at Gordon College and his teaching there. I posted and offered the position of the fine arts director to our very own Michael Coelho, who has graciously accepted the position. I think that given his experience and high level of respect in both the school and the community, he'll do very well. There's this underlying fear or concern that we're going to lose Michael at some point, and I think that's a very real concern, and I think, you know, my conversations with him, he's, he's a teacher. He's a teacher first, above anything, and so when we talked it through, he, you know, he said, I, I want to continue doing what I'm doing and, you know, and expand on that, so. He, he's looking forward to the position, he has a flexible schedule as it is now, because he teaches the orchestra in the evening, so his schedule during the day is more flexed. So we're adding a .2 to Michael's position, it's the same situation that Jerry was in, making him a 1.2 employee, similar to some other teachers that we have in the system, so. Looking forward to, to working with him on a number of things, I wouldn't say issues, but the sound booth and some of the technology that we're working with, I'm going to, going to look to move, do some different things, so I'm excited about that. Over the past two weeks, I've had the pleasure of attending two culminating events at the middle school. You had alluded to them earlier, Jen, in your, in some of your comments, the civics fair last week and the miniature golf project put on by the seventh graders. Simply amazed by the quality of the work of the middle school students, and that's across the board. You know, I mentioned earlier tonight, the, the middle school band and chorus, if you closed your eyes, you would never know that there were, there were middle school kids, they're just amazing. The issues that they're tackling at the, at the, at the middle school, the civics fair, you know, they tackled issues of sexuality, suicide in student athletes, hate crimes, pollution, the dredging of the Ipswich River. The Ipswich River Project, the young man who's pursuing that is actually taking it to the town and wants to pursue that project and see it to its fruition. Had the opportunity to talk with his mom and dad, and he's, he's pretty passionate about it, so we'll see where that goes. The mini golf project that the seventh graders do focuses on pollution and our, and our natural resources and the impact on the community. Students research different types of pollution, in, in particular in our area. They wrote letters to the editor of, of some of the big newspapers, offering potential solutions to the problems. They're tackling real-world problems and changing the world for the better, even, even at the middle school level. Administratively, we're trying to wind down the year, close up shop, so to speak, and begin planning for next year. Principals and teachers have been actively interviewing candidates for our open positions in order to secure the best possible candidates. For our elementary openings, we had over 100 applicants, so there's no shortage of elementary school.
That's fantastic.
Teachers out there. So I'm confident that we'll have, you know, fantastic additions to our staff, in particular at the elementary level. Not, I'm confident that we're going to have great candidates at the middle and high school, but there's not quite as many. In terms of numbers, we have six retirements this year, we've had eight resignations and one non-renewal thus far. And that's not, that's not out of the ordinary for a school year, and there, those are, those are all positions, they're not, they're not all, all teaching positions. Happy to report that this week, we were able to reach tentative agreements with both the custodial unit and the education assistants, the paraeducators, once ratified by their respective unions, we're going to have to call a special meeting with the school committee, so we're not quite off the hook after tonight to ratify them with the school committee.
Can we do that remotely?
Yeah. Potentially, yes. Okay. I would love to do them remotely, I'm, I'm just not sure what else is going to end up on the agenda, that's what, that's.
Yeah, yeah.
So I met with both Keith, our technology director, and Chris Race this week, just to, to review the, the summer projects that they've got on, on tap. Both of them, both of those departments tend to be very busy over the summer and preparing for next year, so we just went over the, the list of projects that they're working on. This week, this past week, Tracy once again sent out all the resources for Juneteenth. Tomorrow morning, each of the schools will be having, will participate, be participating in a recognition of Juneteenth as well as the raising of the Juneteenth flags in each building. Tuesday's the last day of school, the half-day for students, a full day for the staff, and we're looking forward to just stepping away. That's it.
Any questions for Brian?
All right, COVID numbers, we had 14 cases this week that I reported, my, my final COVID.
It's so obvious.
Yeah, no, no, hey, they're still there. You know, and 14, I guess, is somewhat misleading, since we don't have, most of the high schoolers aren't in school this week, and we graduated a bunch, and we've had different activities, so there, like, I don't think any cases were reported today because of Green Beach Day.
Yeah. Good. Okay, so we're on to subcommittee working groups and liaison reports, have we had any, anyone meet since our last, Pov?
We met, and we just, we have one policy in here, it's got tiny, tiny adjustments. Basically, it's, it's policy IJR, reconsideration of instructional resources, and we literally changed, in the, in the first paragraph, it used to say board policies, and now it says district policies, and in the last paragraph, it used to say after the school committee has adopted new materials, and now it says after the district has adopted new materials, because we don't choose the materials. So that's it.
All right, can I get a motion to support the changes to policy IJR?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor? No other meetings to report on? Okay, let's see, how about new business?
I have a question.
Yes.
And I don't know if it's new business, but when Heather Leonard gave us that summary at the end about possibly changing timeline for pain, when do we, when can we talk about something like that?
We'll do that in our, our retreat in August, when we set our goals for the next year, we can, we'll talk about that then.
Okay.
So that, the changing of the timeline is actually a policy function.
Okay.
There's school committee policy around the FEPI grant process. Actually, Barry wrote that policy, I think, and we just revised it, what, two years ago, right? So that would, we, we can certainly discuss it there, but then it'd go to a policy for any, any changes in.
Okay.
We can certainly do, do that and move the dates. I, I certainly support moving the dates around a little bit, because to try to do the meetings, they just met the last three weeks, and how busy have we all been?
Yeah.
You know, John's trying to do one of the meetings literally from the senior week cruise in Boston Harbor, so, you know, if we could do that earlier, that would certainly be beneficial.
Okay.
All right, vouchers and bills are all set. Consent agenda, move the Ipswich School Committee to approve the following: meeting minutes from March 17th, 2022, and meeting minutes from June 2nd, 2022.
Second.
All in favor? Approved? Okay, did a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, goodnight, Ipswich.
Night.
Is anybody in the booths, your mics are probably still hot.
Oh my God, they're going to call.
Is that worth calling?
It's been, it has been insane.
Like, they need you to come in?
Yeah. First they send you the love text.